Good morning, and thank you for joining us this morning for our City Council Study Session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Hooray.
Here.
Cheatham.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Clapp.
Here. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Two as Police Union Quarterly Update. Members of the Polatello Police Union will give the council an update of activities this past quarter.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for this time that we have that we can give our quarterly update. My name's Zach Barchie. I'm on the union e-board, and I've been asked to present today. Val Wadsworth was our union president. Recently, he received a promotion to lieutenant, so we congratulate him, but he's no longer eligible to be a union member. We thank him for his leadership and time. I also have Akila Lacy with me. He's the current vice president, so appreciate him being here. The Polatello Police Union and its members have been involved in several community events, risen above and beyond during Calls of Service, and recognize the importance of retention and recruiting, and today we'll be focusing our comments on those topics. So first up is our community events. The police donated $2,500 to Portnife Valley Boys and Girls Club. We participated in the Rally in the Alley fundraiser, which would raise money to benefit victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, human trafficking, and through Family Services Alliance. We participated in the Juneteenth Celebration at the Senior Citizen Center. Once a month, we've been going to My World Discovery Museum in the Pine Ridge Mall and participating in color with cops, interacting with youth. We've attended several events and had positive interactions with ISU Athletics. We've attended the Southeastern Idaho Pride Celebration at Caldwell Park. We've been involved in the Citizens Police Academy, which went very well. There was 18 citizens that graduated. We participated in the Every 15 Minute Presentation, which was held this year at Century High School, which is drunk driver awareness, and we were involved in the Fourth of July Parade, which was well-attended and went off well. For above and beyond during the Calls of Service, we wanted to recognize that there are union members and police officers that have gone above and beyond. One of those, an officer and union member located a stranded adult female, three children that were from California. They recognized the need and went over and filled her vehicle full of gas so she could continue towards home, towards California. Also, another union member and officer responded to a welfare check near Delita skating rink. When they went towards Delita, they were told that the responsible party that had called it in didn't even want to go near this person that they wanted us to do a welfare check for because they were afraid. The officer recognized that the individual needed some help. They were able to get this individual to a warming shelter to get him food. They went and purchased clothing at DI, were able to help him get a bus ticket so he could continue home towards Texas. Both of these events were done with the union members' own money and without hesitation or question. Last month, there were 12 drug-related overdoses in the community. Officers and union members administered Narcan six times in life-saving measures. Several union members are involved. We also want to recognize that several union members are involved in coaching a variety of sports with youth leagues. This includes from high school all the way down to Little League and participation. Retention and recruiting is a priority for the union. It's very important. Our union recognizes that leadership, training, equipment are all vital. In recent months, we've had officers shot in the line of duty. The training, leadership, and equipment has saved lives. The police union was able to donate in an effort to assist the family members' needs, including travel and lodging. We also rallied community members and other unions for continued support, which was vital. Several days ago, a vehicle crashed and overturned into a canal, submersing the vehicle and its occupant. Union members and officers without hesitation jumped into the canal, being submerged into water, broke the window, and were able to retrieve the driver. Lifesaving measures continued, and CPR, and the driver was taken to the hospital. Last week, a male went into a yard and started shooting a firearm. Union members and officers responded and were shot at. Again, our training and leadership led to a positive outcome. I want to say that these events have shown that the Polatello Police Department's union members are well-trained. We have excellent leadership, and we have good equipment. We also recognize that there's an importance with having EAP that is provided and having a good support, peer support team, which is vital. We recognize that major events and high-stress incidents have taken a toll on our union members and their families. If you have any questions or specifics on any of these, we'd be happy to talk about them or answer any questions you may have. But we do appreciate and we need the mayor and the council's support now and moving forward more than ever before. We also want to recognize the amazing community that we serve. The outpouring of community members who appreciate the police department and union members is humbling. It doesn't go without appreciation. Polatello is a great place to live, raise a family, and serve the community, and we're glad to be here. Going forward, our union looks forward to future events in the community, and we look forward to being able to participate. Some of the events that we will be a part of is back-to-school events at Grace Lutheran High School, Ice Cream Zufari at the Polatello Zoo. We also plan on fundraising for things such as Give Cops a Bird, Secret Santa, and Shop with a Cop. At this time, we want to again thank you for your time, and we want to ask if there are any questions that you might have for us that we can answer.
Question. Rick?
Sergeant, are the members of the dispatch department members of the union?
Yes.
Yeah, what a great job. I think we need to make a note of the event that's going to be happening this evening at 4:30 to honor them for their recent award and hope that everybody can turn out to Caldwell Park to be a part of what they do because they are the first responders.
Yes, their certification that they got is limited in this nation, and so the fact that they were able to put that together.
They've been working on it for a couple of years. It's one of the biggest accomplishments in our department.
And it's the only dispatch center in the state of Idaho that has that accreditation and certification.
Yeah, only 306 in the world. And, you know, I may get a little emotional here. This past week, I've been feeling it as mayor while Brian's been out of town, and, man, it's been a tough week. I have almost no words to say for the appreciation of what you guys go through.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions, council?
Wanted to thank the parade, the July 4th parade. I was in that. We got a problem at just as you go down through the tunnel on that concrete piece that it butts out. It was very difficult not to run over kids right there. That was a serious pinch point.
So we did an after-action report in reference to the Fourth of July, and one of the things that we're going to ask for next year is to make sure to talk to the drivers that it's in the parade permit itself that they don't throw candy from the cars, but that they have people that pass out the candy. So we're going to have flyers to make sure that every float knows that, and we hope that that'll help keep back. We also had, between Bennett County and Polatello, we had 10 bicycle officers to try and watch the youth, you know, as they're trying to encroach to get that candy, just to make sure that everyone was safe.
The float I was on, our candy people were lagging way behind, and the float in front of us was quite a ways down the hill already, and it was tough. People absolutely were ignoring us as we came through that particular pinch point. That was a tough one.
And this was probably one of the, it was very well-attended, and there was quite a few floats, so.
Lot of excitement post-COVID parade. Everybody was pretty hyped about it.
It was. Great audience.
Linda?
I wanted to thank you for several things, same as Rick, for what you do every day to serve and protect this community and all of us and keep us safe. The other thing is especially for all of the extra work that you do in the community, all these things that you've listed off. And for me personally, a thanks for supporting the Boys and Girls Club. That's a project that's near and dear to my heart. It's a really important thing for this community, and thank you so much for stepping up and helping us meet our fundraising goal in order to get match money. So you guys always come through and just every day going above and beyond, so thank you.
Thank you, and we look forward to the Boys and Girls Club. It is an important thing for the community and something that my family, extended family, has seen benefit in their communities as well. So I'm excited to have it.
I grew up in one.
I know. You were a Boys and Girls Club kid.
I was a Boys and Girls Club kid. I spent a lot of time there. It was playing sports and stuff, so.
I still want to record a testimonial from you. We need a video. Val made an important point when I was talking to him about getting a donation from you, and he said that that you guys have enough job security that, you know, a Boys and Girls Club is a good thing because it will divert some of those people that would be future customers of yours. Yeah, yeah, so thank you.
Any other questions?
Just thank you. You're amazing. The union, the department, the officers, the people, absolutely amazing for our community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Yep. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Three as Human Relations Advisory Committee Update. Representatives from the Human Relations Advisory Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, council and mayor and city clerk Connie. It's always wonderful to see you, everyone. I am Chris Cole-Clegg. I am the chairperson currently of the Human Relations Advisory Committee, and this is Rainbow Maldonado. She is currently serving as the vice chairperson. I will thank you for your time this morning and say that we have, as the Human Relations Advisory Committee, experienced a high rate of turnover in committee positions. I have been on the committee for less than a year and a half, and I'm in the chairperson position, so you'll forgive me if there are things that have been happening in the past year that I do overlook or am unaware of as I have adjusted to my new role. One of the things that we have worked on is getting an online submission form for human relations and human rights violations, complaints to be submitted to the city on the city website, and that is one thing that we are very proud of, that we have been able to establish within our work where someone can submit that online form either anonymously. They can request contact information. We work with the city police department to make sure that it's not a police matter first before we can look into any options that we have, resources that we can point them to, that kind of thing. We've also been working to build relations with the Fort Hall Native American Reservation. We have been meeting, we've met with the mayor a few times to discuss options on National Indigenous Peoples' Day versus Columbus Day, recognizing the importance that the Native American people play in our current city and the history of our city. We also have been very interested in working with the mayor and city council to get some options for representation from nearby communities, including Fort Hall, Chabik, Inca, American Falls, that kind of thing, on the Human Relations Advisory Committee to expand our connections. We have members within the city of Polatello who have served, who are serving on the committee, who have those connections within the community, like the NAACP, the Southeast Idaho Pride Foundation, a few other things like that. But it would be really nice to work with someone who may be in the city of Chabik if there's something going on there, or Inca, you know, who we really don't hear about very much. It would be beneficial, we believe, to have that representation on the committee, whether that's in an advisory capacity, guest speakers who are invited to meet, or if, as they serve in an official capacity, as board members. And we will continue to be working and progressing toward recognizing the, our main focus has been resolving some of the years-long process of trying to recognize the reservation and its people and its history here in Polatello, and that's one of the main focuses we've been working on, is progressing that forward with recognizing and proclamations and all our options essentially as we continue to work forward from there. I will say that at this time next year, when we go to give this report, we will have a new chairperson. Unfortunately, I have had to resign as my master's degree school schedule is taking effect, and I'm unable to continue serving unfortunately. So I do want to say that the short amount of time that I've been able to serve has been very wonderful, and I'm very much looking forward to, once my master's degree is completed, to see if there are open positions available on the Human Relations Advisory Committee to just kind of jump right back in and see where I can go from there to serve the community in the future.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I invite any questions or comments.
There has been a lot of turnover on this committee, so I want to thank you and commend you for, you know, moving things forward and accomplishing some things. I think getting that online submission form, because it's been talked about for a long time, so getting that accomplished is a big thing, and I think it will really help our community. And also, another project that's been talked about for a long time is some recognition of our tribal neighbors, and so I think that's another one. I'm glad to see progress on these projects, and thank you. Sorry that we're losing you, Chris.
Thank you.
We all are. We get your time here. He's been amazing. Yeah, but maybe you can come back in.
Josh?
And I just want to add, I think the reason why that I've seen, I have the opportunity to be the liaison, obviously, and one of the things that I've seen and noticed is the dedication and compassion. The people on that board are unmatched, and it's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? It has been fun to work with you. You're just, you're an amazing person. I guess Rainbow, you're stepping into it, huh?
Four months.
Great.
Excited for the opportunity.
Super excited.
That's what I signed up for.
There's a lot of passion on that group, but only a few of you will step up and do it. So thank you very much for that. Thank you for what you've done, and we'll continue to work on it. Good luck in your master's program.
I'll be back.
Yes, you will.
Super. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four as Polatello Iwamizawa Sister City Foundation Update. Representatives from Polatello Iwamizawa Sister City Foundation will give the council an update of their activities.
I am Doug Woolley. I'm the chairperson or chairman for the Sister City Iwamizawa, or Polatello Iwamizawa Sister City Foundation. The latest that we've got going on is we do have four Japanese delegates coming, and a couple of chaperones on the 27th of July that we're hosting. Because of COVID, though, this program has not been really terribly active on the delegation side for international travel restrictions, and we were unable to send a delegation this year because of Japan being so closed, which was unfortunate. But we do have a delegation picked for next year, and so that process is taking place. We want to thank the city council for their support in their, in our endeavors to further the foundation. We just recently became a private foundation at the end of last year and no longer a subcommittee of the city. But we are, the board's very strong. We have 15 on the board right now, and we typically have very good attendance. We just had a meeting last Tuesday, and we're moving forward with this delegation coming. The donations that we receive from the city typically cover the chaperone going to Japan, Iwamizawa, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with where that's at, but it's on the, it's in that top island, Hokkaido, of Japan. And then also for all the delegates coming this way, it helps with the events that we do for them. You know, we'll take them to, give them tours of the area. Typically, we'll take them to Yellowstone and show them, you know, the culture of the Polatello Idaho area, Bannet County, and give them an idea of what life is like. They stay in host families, both sides. When the delegates come over here, we will place them with families that have volunteered to house them and take care of them and feed them for a couple of weeks, and it happens the same way on the other side. And they get a really, really good experience of what it's like to live here, and we get a great experience of what it's like to live over there. And it's primarily a youth program. We deal with kids from 14 to 18. Every fifth year, we do do an adult delegation where we have an adult delegation go to Iwamizawa. It's a little different, but, and it's not quite as long, but for the most part, we focus mostly on our youth delegations, and it's a life-changing experience for both sides. You really do experience, I've been to Iwamizawa, and you do experience a completely different culture and different way of, I mean, they're people just like us. They get up and put their pants on and go to work, but there is a lot of difference between us, and it does foster some great relationships between us and Iwamizawa, and it's well-spent, in my opinion. The city council and the mayor have been very supportive of this organization, and we, again, express our appreciation. We typically have a, on a normal year, we typically have a budget of probably, we have to probably fund the program for about almost $30,000 right now, simply because of the cost of travel and the cost of doing the tours in this area and sending the chaperone. Typically, the chaperone will spend a lot of time with the delegates during the year fundraising, and that's primarily where we get most of our funds, is through fundraising processes. And we do it various ways, and but that, it's been around for about almost 40 years now in Polatello. So it's a, it's the, I think, it goes up, it stands up against any youth program out there. In fact, I'm kind of partial. I really think it's a great experience for these young people, and they, and you see lives change. You really do. You see their minds open and understand a lot more. So again, we appreciate everything you are willing to give us. So any questions, I'm happy to.
Rick?
I'm just curious about the tour. Is what they see while they're here based on what you want to show them, or do they make requests about what they would like to see while they're here?
Both. They typically, they typically will want to see, Yellowstone's a big one, and ironically, I mean, I've been on the Yellowstone tours, and they, there's been bear that just happened to come out, and these Japanese people are so lucky, and, you know, we as locals are like a bear, you know, and they don't really care about the bears, the buffalo. As soon as they see a buffalo, they just, they go nuts, and it's crazy, you know, and start taking pictures and everything. But Yellowstone, and we will take them and do a tour of ISU, and we'll let them go to Old Town, and they like to shop the area. Typically, we've taken them to City of Rocks and some of the sites in this area. We took them over to Stedman Farms before it burned down, you know, and so it's, it's both. They do, and we usually have an evaluation after the fact, and we have them rate the events that they preferred or they liked the most, and then we do make an assessment at that point on, okay, what do they want? Like, we aren't going to Lagoon this year because, partly because of logistics, it's really hard to get a city van to go to Utah anymore because of our current status as an independent foundation, and it's just expensive, and we couldn't get free tickets this year and all that. But that's been dwindling for quite some time because we typically have about half of them that enjoy it, and the other ones, it's too hot, and, you know, so it just depends on what they like. The real, and I've been in this situation because I did go in 2016 as a chaperone. The real, the thing that they love the most, though, by the time they leave, is the host families. Most of the time, there's a lot of tears when they leave because you become quite attached to the host family, and you understand the culture a little bit more, and they eat the food we have here, which is not as good as the food there, but it's still, still, you know, part of the experience and, you know.
Linda?
And my question is related to the host families. You mentioned, you know, that COVID has made the delegation activity difficult. What about the host family? Have you had more trouble finding families for the people that are coming here? Has that been a challenge or?
Yeah, we only have four delegates coming this year, which is very, that's about half of what we usually have, if not, less than half. And it is difficult, but not because of, not, I don't know if it's necessarily because of COVID. I think that mostly people in this area have, you know, we've learned to deal with it and everything. But we have had difficulty with finding host families. Every year we do. Every year, we have a hard time finding host families. But usually, usually, we're able to accommodate, well, we've always been able to accommodate them. Most of the time, you're seeing the council families, the council member families, the board member families hosting a lot, and we have quite a few families, you know, and we usually like to put them with young kids because, and that's really a criteria. I mean, we want them to experience the fellow teenagers and the fun that that comes with. And we do activities during the week, and then the host family gets weekends. So they're responsible for weekends, and we just do the activities during the week because people work and we want to show them the area and the culture and everything. And there's, this year, we're, because there's only four delegates plus two chaperones coming, you know, it's not that we're not willing to spend the resources to go and show these people a good time, if you will. It's just, it's a little different situation where we may be able to do a little bit more because there isn't, you know, like, we can possibly do maybe a little more funding because there's not so many kids, but, you know, we take them to Ross Park, and depending on the group, they, some swim, some don't, you know, it just, it's a, they're teenagers from Japan, and ironically, they act sometimes a lot like the teenagers here. They're, you know.
Quirky.
Yeah. They're certainly different, and the language barrier and everything is, you know, there, but, but yeah, host families, every year, we.
How do you recruit host families typically?
We just ask people we know.
Word of mouth mostly.
Yeah, mostly, yeah. If council members can't, I should say, if board members can't host, you know, we usually will branch out and see if we can't find families to get involved. A lot of times, the families that have sent kids are really willing to host because they, you know, they love the experience or they've loved the experience. I've hosted eight kids, you know, so there's people that are in it, like myself, that have hosted many, many times. This year, we're short one family, and ironically, we only have four kids, you know. Usually, you know, we have 11 kids coming plus a chaperone, and we have no problem. But this year, we had, I think what the real problem this year was, though, is at the last minute, they decided to come, like, two months before they were, and we didn't think it was really going to happen because Japan was really closed. We felt like they were just wishful thinking, but the protocol for COVID, they have to go through quite a testing process to even get into the country and then to get out of the country and everything, and we just thought, wow, you know, it's maybe, maybe, let's just plan on next year, but they insisted they wanted to come, and we're happy to have them come, that's fine, and we'll take care of them. It's just COVID has really, you know, I've been the chairman for the entire time of COVID, and I haven't really, you know, had to do a lot, to tell you the truth, when it comes to the delegations. I mean, we're still holding meetings, and we're still trying to stay active in the program, and we, you know, we have been planning for this. And we, you know, we, we have been planning for, for this, for when this, now that things are open, you know, we've been planning for it for a long time. So we're ready to go.
Definitely a great program and it's fun to see the youth from here that have gone twenty-five years ago that come up and say, hey, they're not youth anymore, but they're, I went to this and it's, it's really neat. So it's a great program. Any other questions? Doug, thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it. Thank you. We will move to agenda item five, Brady Chapel Restoration Update. Planning and Development Services staff and representatives of the Friends of the Brady Chapel, LTD will be present to discuss and seek council's direction regarding funding options for the restoration of the Brady Chapel utilization or utilizing sixty-five thousand dollars of funds from the facade improvement program. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jim Engelsley, Long Range Planner for the city. I also have here Nick Nielsen and Letitia Herzog, who represent the Friends of the Brady Chapel Organization. I'm just going to give a, just a quick update from when we last approached council about the Brady Chapel. And then Nick and Letitia will go over what has been done since. So in two thousand nineteen, previous planning director Melanie Giggly approached the council at that time to discuss the possibility of transferring funds from the facade improvement program to the restoration of the Brady Chapel. And it was decided by council that the Historic Preservation Commission should create a plan for the restoration and long-term maintenance of the building. And since that time, we have created a, a plan called the Centennial Campaign Plan to foster renewed interest in, in the chapel and to get more funds. To date, we have raised eleven thousand dollars in, in public funds that have been donated. And we have ten thousand dollars in grants ready to be spent. And what Nick and Letitia will talk about are the, the phases that we'll have to go through for the full restoration of the building. But the twenty thousand dollars that we have won't, won't get us to the first phase just due to costs of restoration and materials and all of that. And so the sixty-five thousand dollars would help immensely. Not only that, but we could double that, that amount through additional grants. So it's kind of just a background. Nick, Letitia, if you want to take it from there, I'll be here if you have questions from staff.
Thank you. I'd like to just give an overview of our Friends of the Brady Chapel Organization. Letitia and I served as members of the Historic Preservation Commission. Letitia for many years, myself not quite so long. But during that time, we saw that there was a need to assist the city, if possible, with a more of a private organization for the fundraising aspect and the restoration and maintenance of this valuable asset that we have in the city, the Brady Chapel. We believe the Brady Chapel is, is valuable for many reasons. Historic reasons, it can, Letitia will go into possible future uses and revenue-producing uses of the chapel. But for historic purposes, educational purposes, many purposes, the Brady Chapel can have. So after Letitia and I and Jackie Alvort were released from the Historic Preservation Commission, we decided to form this organization. We'd served our terms.
He said, made it sound like his prison sentence. Finally released you.
Twenty years.
That's right.
For a few minutes, it seemed like that, but anyway. But once we, once we were out of the organization there, we decided to form the Friends of the Brady Chapel Limited. In August, we signed up. We got articles of incorporation through the state. We created bylaws, we got a tax ID number, and we filed for tax exempt status with the IRS. We just got our letter yesterday indicating that we have been approved for tax exempt status as a five oh three C, five oh one C three organization. And we're extremely happy about that because now we can take tax deductible donations and accept those for the restoration of the Brady Chapel. I serve as president of the Friends of the Brady Chapel LTD. Letitia serves as vice president and Jackie Alvort serves as secretary treasurer. On our, on our board, we have Arlen Walker, Ruda Casa Bianca, Linda Loureque and Terry New. We're, we're just very committed for, to see this project go forward and be able to preserve this, this gem, this jewel that we have in the community. We meet every Wednesday, excuse me, every second Wednesday of the month. We have a good lively meeting and we get things done. But our purpose is to help, to assist, to be stewards and to be, to, to provide assistance to the city any way we can so that this valuable project, this valuable asset to the community can be preserved for time in perpetuity. I'd like to turn the time over to Letitia now to talk about the phases of the project that we have and the costs that will be involved for those phases.
When we approached the council in two thousand and nineteen for funds, we had put together a small list of items in the chapel that needed to be, that needed to be repaired. And the, the first item that needed to be repaired on the, on the chapel was the stonework on the inside and on the outside. And the pinnacles that we had already had carved were in storage at that time. And we had received a estimate for sixty thousand dollars for, for the repair installation and, of the pinnacles and the, and the stonework. We're now unfortunately over seventy thousand. So our twenty thousand that we've raised and the money that we could potentially get from the facade project or from the facade loan program would help greatly to do that initial stage of the, of the restoration work. We, we were challenged with putting together, you know, a list of things that we needed to accomplish in order to make this building be able to put it into work and then start making it work for itself. And so some of the things that we, that we came up with, phase one was the pinnacles. They'd already been carved, the stone and brick repair and the pinnacle installation. And we're at seventy-seven thousand dollars now for that installation work. Phase two was, you put it to us that we needed to make sure that it was ADA accessible. So we've looked into making the, the chapel ADA accessible. Roof restoration probably will need to happen again in the next five years. It does have an asphalt roof that hasn't been done since ninety-something. And it's already passed its warranty. We don't have any roof leaks at this point, but roof repair is, is necessitated soon. Additional vandal-resistant lighting, the, the city put out money three years ago and installed new lighting around the exterior of the chapel. And within three months, all three lights had been busted back off and are now gone again. So we need to install vandal-resistant lighting instead of the lighting that we had, which was expensive, you guys. I'm so sorry that the vandals are as bad as they are. Phase three was door repair. We do have, the windows are in good repair, but there is window repair that needs to happen. That's a, that's a yearly maintenance thing. But we also would like to install vandal-resistant storm windows. Right now, all we have on the chapel is plexi and it's starting to yellow on the south side. So that's phase three. Phase four is radiant heating, floor refinishing and new replica pews. Currently, when the city turned the chapel back over for use, there were three pews that were original pews still in the building. And last year, we found one of the pews. We had a phone call from a gentleman that used to work for the water department. And he reported that he had one of the pews and if we would like to come and get it, we were welcome to. And we rushed right over and picked up the, the fourth pew. So now we're, we're four of twenty pews. So pew restoration or replicas as another needed item. Anyway, when we put together this budget in two thousand and nineteen, and this is pre-COVID, of course, the budget was two hundred and fifty thousand. And we all know what building budgets are going like now. So we will need to re-review and escalate our budget for our future phases. And as we all know, as, as we extend those phases out, the, the building budget will only increase. But currently, we are, we are focused on phase one. Our hope is that the bid that we've got is good for sixty days, that we can tackle this task in preparation for the centennial celebration that is coming up in September, that this work will be well underway and the pinnacles can be installed before that heritage conference happens. And the Brady Chapel is being used as the symbol of the heritage, the Idaho Heritage Conference, which is going to be held here in Pocatello for three days in September. And that's the nineteenth, twentieth and twenty-first. So that's kind of my overview. We're hoping, we've already put together with the help of the Parks and Recreation Department, a plan for its use for education, music venue, like music, like cello, chamber music venues, choiral uses, wedding celebrations, funeral celebrations. And we have a plan that needs to be updated because it was completed in two thousand and sixteen. It has been reviewed by legal for the city and they had some suggestions of things that we needed to update. So we're well on our way for making progress for all the things that you guys have asked for. And we're just hoping that you can help us out and that we become partners in this, the stewardship of this building.
Questions, council? Rick or Roger?
I really commend you on becoming a five oh one C three because I really think that will encourage people to donate. Of course, the tax code changed, so got to donate significantly to get a tax benefit. But I, I really believe that somewhere, we got to have dialogue as to whether this is an independent chapel or if it's really part of our cemetery. Because if it's part of our cemetery, then we should be maintaining it more. You know, but, but I understand it's a, something that was put in place by a family and heritage there. So somewhere, we got to really work on the dialogue. Because if it's part of the cemetery, then it really becomes ownership of the whole community. And if it's owned by the whole community, then we should be investing and maintaining and making it kind of a pivotal place for people to use when they have occasion to use the cemetery. And with what I would say, the downturn of funerals and people going to memorials and, and cremations, I could see that really escalating in terms of use for those type of things. So.
If I may respond, normally when I see a letter from the IRS, I don't get excited. This is the first time I've ever got excited about a letter from the IRS. And that was approving our five oh one C three status. So we really are grateful for that. We do see the need for dialogue and coordination between the city and this organization. We recognize that, that the city owns the building. And we recognize that the city, or we believe that the city does have an obligation to maintain and, and keep up the, the building. However, we are here to assist and do whatever we can in that process. And that really is the purpose of our organization is, as Letitia mentioned, to be partners and to be able to understand exactly.
Thread the needle.
Yes. Exactly. We need to know who's doing what and how we're doing it. And we're finding that as we go along, that there are many questions that, that need to be answered in that regard. And I just think that that's a continuing process and, and we will continue. We've worked with John Banks in the Recreation Department very closely and we will continue to do that. And we want to continue to work with this council and with.
With the HPC as well.
And the HPC as well.
They're continuing to do fundraising with us. You know, when we have an event, it's all of us together. So we hope to continue that. And the hard part is, is that a building that's not occupied sometimes goes unnoticed as to what is needed. And so when we're there on a more regular basis, we see what we need to have happen. And that's when, you know, the conversations happen. And, and luckily, you know, having, having somebody from the Parks Department and having somebody from HPC, you know, come, all come together and look at the building together. We come up with a plan together that, of things that we, we think that we can tackle and things that we, we feel we need to help with. And, you know, I'm, I'm also an architect by vocation. So I try and turn a critical eye at it. I still see a building that I love, but I, I see a lot of things that, that need attention. And the longer we leave them, unfortunately, the worse they, they do get. So this is something that we're hoping that we can, we can tackle right away. And then we can continue as the building gets in, in better shape, putting it to more and more use and, and having it make money for itself. And, and that's important too. I don't think that a, a treasure like this should sit vacant. I think it should be getting used and, and that's our, that's our goal, that's our end goal.
I just wanted to sort of pick up on something that, that Roger mentioned about this being something for the entire community. And I know in our discussions at Friends that that's one of the things that we've really talked about. But that this is a benefit for, for the whole community. It may be a city building and we have an organization that is working on, you know, being the stewards for, for the restoration and for ongoing upkeep. But that ultimately, this is something that will benefit the whole community. And so I just wanted to ask you if you could say a little bit about, you know, with some of the fundraising events and, and the events where the chapel is open, also some of the online things, like what has the response from the community been?
Sure. Well, so a lot of times when we're just at the chapel, like we'll happen to need to go by the chapel for some reason. Like somebody will say, you know, there's a weed in one of the gutters and so we'll go by to take a look and we'll unlock the door. You would not believe, like the minute that door gets cracked open, people like pop their heads in and they say, you know, I've never seen the inside of the chapel before. I saw the door open. Would you mind if I looked around? It's so exciting for so many people. Or people that come and they say, I've lived in this town all my life and I've never seen inside the chapel. We have it open so infrequently and that's, it's a shame. But that people get so. But that people get so excited the minute they see that door cracked open, that they rush over to, you know, like they, they're driving by and they'll say, I was just driving by. Or, um, we had a member last night say that the museum had put photographs online of the replica and some of the wagons and some pictures of the Brady Chapel. Their items that they'd put on for the replica had hits of about 400 hits per photo. And the Brady Chapel had 8,000 hits. And, and it was in a week's time. And I thought that was amazing, that, that the chapel would get so many hits, um, compared to, you know, I mean, yes, there's the Fort Hall and it's the whole replica, but there's some very interesting photos and, and, but the Brady Chapel had 8,000 hits. And people are interested in our, in the chapel.
Awesome. We got Josh in there.
I answered my question, so.
Oh, Rick.
Is there a question about who owns that building and the property it sits on?
No.
No.
Who owns that?
The city does.
The city owns it. So we own the chapel?
It was, it was donated back to the city in 1959. So the, the, the parklet that's in front of the chapel and the chapel ground itself was given to the Brady's to build the chapel, um, in 1920. Uh, 19, uh, 1919.
1919.
When they started.
Right.
Um, and then they owned the chapel up until the time that Mrs. Brady, Irene Brady, passed away. And in, and that was in 59. And the family donated the chapel back to the city. The city had the building, um, open until 61 and then they closed the chapel and started using it for storage, unfortunately. But, um, those events precipitated the chapel being given and the ground in front being given back to the city.
So has the Brady family retained any kind of participation in all this over the years?
No.
No.
No. And we've reached out to them several times.
We started there with fundraising because it seemed obvious, but.
Yeah.
There isn't.
There isn't any.
Yeah. We have tried to reach out. I, I also, the, the architect for the building is Frank Paradise. I was able to talk to his only remaining son and he was able to, to provide me a fr- a picture of Frank Paradise, but that was about the extent of it. I just wanted to comment on, on what Letitia had been saying. People come with curiosity, but when they enter, they marvel at the building itself and how beautiful it is. The stained glass and, uh, the limestone and, and everything inside that just makes it a, a treasure, makes it a beautiful building. And we want it to be part of the community. The city owns it, but we, we, it has been shut up, uh, for so long. We want to open it. We want to make it available for the citizens of the community.
Did, did your, um, budget include heating and cooling? At one time, I know you did, but I don't.
Heating, um, not cooling. The building itself is, even in the summertime, is pretty cool inside. So, and, and that has to do with the thickness of the stone and the brick wall. But heating in the wintertime would take that, um, kind of a chill off. Yeah. And, and we're talking heating at only like 55 degrees, you know, just to keep that, that chill off of it that, that drives unfortunately what we call a, you know, a condensation loop. So that moisture that's on the outside and will collect on the inside. And so we've got a lot of efflorescing on the stone, which is the minerals that get left behind from the condensation evaporating. And so basically, it's breaking down the stone over time and that, and that mineral gets left behind every time the moisture gets driven through the wall. So part of our restoration work of the, of the stone is neutralizing of the minerals because it, it really, it's acidic, so it needs to be neutralized. All the stone will be neutralized and washed. All of the, um, mortar will be repointed so that the stone sitting on stone, um, isn't, um, causing erosion between the stones. So all of the mortar will be repointed between the stones. And then, um, stainless steel rods will be inserted, um, in the tops of the stones for the new pinnacles to be set on. Before, they were just iron rods and of course, we all know that iron just rusts away. And so the new rods will be stainless steel and that will help hold these pinnacles together for hopefully another hundred plus years. And, and it'll just be minor, you know, um.
So the heating you have designed, will it also be used to heat it for use during the winter?
Correct. But the heating that was, the building was originally designed for heating and if we peel up the carpet that's there just to cover the stained floor, there's a concrete floor and that was how the chapel was intended to be used, was a concrete floor. There were 10, um, electric, um, radiators that were supposed to be in the building. They never got installed because none of the electrical, when the Brady's, um, built the chapel, none of the electrical was installed. It was all put in in conduits and boxes. But when they, um, restored the chapel, the first time they ran the first electrical that had ever been in the building, and that's, and that was because of Twyla Thomas, who ran Walker Monument, was, um, one of the spearheads for, for getting that, the chapel back in use again. And there's an eternal, um, lantern that's lit in the chapel with her name on it. So she got the electrical installed in the, in the building with part of her committee that, that started that restoration work. So we have the ability to put radiant in there and that's what we'd like to do is stick with the original plan, probably not radiators, but probably radiant floor so that the inside of the building can be reorganized depending on the function of the, of the building for the, for the facility.
Sounds good. Claudia?
So I'm, I'm curious, um, once this entire restoration is accomplished, do you anticipate having like a docent there or how, how, cause clearly, I, I mean, from what you've said about the vandalism and the whatnot, I wouldn't just want, you know, we can't just leave the doors unlocked and nobody there.
Right.
So I'm just curious what the, your ideas are regarding that?
Our plan, our plan with Parks and Recreation was, um, you know, like they would get the applications for, for the use because it is their building first. But that we as volunteers would volunteer for several of the occasions. And then they said that if it were during work hours, that they could put staff, they could staff it for, for the event. So working in conjunction with us and them, we're hoping that we can cover the staffing needs because we see that, you know, there's hours that the building might be used that the city's not open. And so we can cover those things. And so we're, we're saying that together, we can, we can cover those needs. And right now, we're thinking that it'll start off slow and as we move forward, it, it might really grow into a, into a thing where it could be staffed.
Right. We're just beginning as an organization, but we do hope to be able to create that volunteer effort and the volunteer power that we need to, to have someone there. We've talked about, uh, even having a, a person with a computer there to take oral histories of, of individuals of the community and kind of keep those oral histories alive, uh, through the chapel to be able to, uh, recognize the accomplishments of the, of the ci- citizens of, of Pocatello there. So that would be part of our volunteer effort.
And so I guess one thing that could happen though is this, all these people that are so excited when they pop their heads in and whatnot, if they, if it was restored and they could actually go in and, and spend time there, donations could be accepted, correct?
Correct.
Absolutely.
Like most, you know, most museums will have, you know, not a charge, not a ticket fee, but donations are accepted.
Yes.
Yes. And we hope to do that. We hope that this organization will be, uh, will serve the main purpose for collecting those donations and encouraging donations in the future.
We don't get huge donations, but like our last, um, opening that we were, that we had on Mem- on Memorial Day, we collected over $700. So, I mean, it's not huge right now, but the more, the more it gets used, uh, used and the more it's open, um, those donations can increase for, for its upkeep.
Sounds good.
Any sort of dollars.
Mm-hmm. Linda?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that too, that, um, every time, you know, we have been open for any event, um, people, two things happen, donations come in and, and, you know, they're not big, but that's growing. Um, and then the other thing is people actually do ask how they can volunteer. So I think the more it's open, that volunteer base or effort, as you called it, is going to build as well. People love the building and they wanna be part of that. So I think we'll be able to, to build that base. And I guess connected to that, I wanted to ask a little bit about, um, and I, and you mentioned briefly a few things, but in terms of the, uh, future uses and then the revenue that could come from those and how that would be used, what's the plan for that? If you could talk a little bit about that?
So the future uses, we were seeing, um, when we say education, we were thinking along the lines of, you know, um, history of the community, history of our past residents. So the oral history, um, leads to, you know, some of those things. Chamber music. We've been asked several times if people could rent it for weddings and it is a beautiful setting. We know that people go there to go walking because it's at such a beautiful setting and, and it doesn't seem unusual that people would want to maybe use the chapel for weddings. But we've also been, um, asked by, well, we, we presented it to the mortuaries here in town and we had one mortuary come back to us and say that they could see partnering in the, um, restoration work of the chapel if they could, um, you know, have it as a venue occasionally for, for funerals and, and for gatherings. So, you know, that's, that's something that, that could happen, um, and as ways to, you know, to fundraise for it. And we see the money going back into the, the fund that keeps the chapel in, in repair, pays for its expenses. So, you know, we know that it'll incur electricity. We know that it, eventually it'll incur water because having these types of, um, programs at the chapel, we're eventually going to need to find a place for facilities for, for the use. And, and we've talked about like where that could happen and it's not a good place in the front and it's not a good place in the back, but I'm working with, we're working with John to, to figure out, you know, like how close it needs to be and, and what it needs to be in order to provide those. So we're, we're looking at those costs that, that help it be used, but also helping its upkeep. So we know that, you know, restoration work never ends and that there's always something to be done. A little paint, a little varnish, a little elbow grease and, and things that, that always need to be taken care of. So those, we're looking at those funds, you know, um, taking care of the chapel into, into its ripe old age.
Right. You used the word perpetuity not long ago in the presentation. Perpetuity, to me, denotes a plan for financing and holding that to the future. So it, it's untouchable, so it performs forever, so to speak.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And, and so I, I see you working on two fronts. I see you trying to get this facility back into good condition so that it can be used. But I also see you having to work in terms of a foundation or something like that so that you were, will be working on the perpetuity angle of it. So that you will be generating funds that will carry it forward and not necessarily necessitate always raising funds for a project because the funds will be available.
Right.
Right. And we'll, we will need those funds in order to maintain the building in perpetuity. Uh, so we anticipate that this organization will always be here. For that purpose. And maybe we won't always be here, but hopefully the organization will always be here.
And the funds will be there for, for the work that needs to happen, um, for the chapel for you guys in the future, for, for any of the work that needs to happen there.
So right now, we're playing catch-up because it's been neglected essentially since 1961.
No, well, not exactly. When it, when it, when it went on the National Register in 79, um, the work didn't begin on it for almost another 10 years. But, um, at that point, then they started playing catch-up. You know, in, in 80, 87, 89, um, the windows were restored by Judy Cantrell and the front doors were taken down and restored and the, um, floor was, was laid with carpet that was donated by one of the mortuaries. And, and things happened and, and people were working on it and you started playing catch-up at that point. You know, new, new roof went on and, um, and all of those things. So that was the point that catch-up started happening, but, but we, we need, we need another boost of catch-up again.
So your estimate is that it takes around 250, 300,000 dollars to get us current?
That was my, that was my estimate in 19, or 2019. And unfortunately, we know that construction has skyrocketed. Um, and my bid for $60,000 for the installation and, um, repair of the pinnacles and brick work was, was 60,000. It was 45 for the, for the stonework and 15 for the install. Now we're at, um, 77,000. So it's gone, it's definitely gone up.
Counsel, I guess the question is, is, or is the council, um, in favor of using the facade improvement program, the $65,000 in that fund to help boost this, uh, get this started?
Mr. Mayor, I'm concerned about that number. I'm just looking through the budget numbers we were presented with this morning and it shows line 962 only contains $42,000. The facade loan trust.
In the report that we pulled, um, with finances help, uh, was 69.
When did you pull that?
Last week. So there may be a question of what is actually in that fund? I checked with, with finance today and they were saying 69 was the, the number.
Well, I think before we can make any kind of decision, we need to know.
Traditionally, has that fund been used as a loan for businesses?
Yeah, it, it's twofold. There is a, a loan to help repair facades downtown and the other was a grant, um, for new signs, awnings, or to remove items that would be considered intrusive to the historic integrity of the building.
But from the same fund?
From the same fund.
Yeah.
Yep. Since I've been here, the loan's never been used. It's only been, every once in a while, uh, there's been requests for grant money. Um, that's, but, uh, very few. And it's actually only one person has really spearheaded the use of that and that's Randy Dixon. Um, he's the only one that's convinced people to use it. Um, but.
We did.
Since I've been here, maybe $2,000 at the most.
HPC gave $10,000 to the food bank, um, of their own, uh, Stanrod Trust Funds. And we hold a lien on the building. So if the building ever gets sold, $10,000 comes back into the HPC from, from the food bank. So there, there have been instances where the HPC has put out some of their own money for the facade restoration work on buildings that, the food bank isn't actually in, it's in the warehouse district, but it's not in the National Register as one of the buildings that's, was contributing. And so we gave funds from the Stanrod Trust into that. And so we actually hold a lien for $10,000 that eventually could come back to HPC that could.
So are there any outstanding loans due to the? So are there any outstanding loans due to this fund that we're aware of? Anybody who's making payments?
I'm not aware of any loans.
I don't, I don't know of any loans. I mean, he mentioned maybe a $2,000 loan, but-
That was a grant, that was grant money?
That was a grant. I don't, I'm not aware of any loans in the last 12 years from this. There have been a few grants, but that's it.
I, I, I agree. And I'd like to know exactly the numbers in that, that balance. But the other question I have is, given that it's a city facility, if we were to approve the facade loan trust funds in order to do this work, could we then require, or would it be reasonable to say that the monies that come into the Brady Chapel go back into that facade loan trust at first, or a part of it, in order to help replenish those funds for the next project? Is that the point of that fund? Is that how that functions?
Well-
Claudia, go ahead.
So to that, because I'm, I was kind of, but if in 12 years, only $2,000, first of all, I guess I have some questions.
So I don't know if only $2,000 in 12 years. I just remember, there may have been a couple, two or three times that they were asked, but I think PDA actually funded some of that facade, not the facade fund here. So-
Because I'd like to know, you know, just do some basic math, how much was in there five years ago? How much has been used so that we can, that we need an accounting, right? So that we know. And then, nobody's ever going to do a loan if they can get free money in a grant. So that's just a no-brainer. I would, if I can get a grant, I'm never going to apply for a loan. So maybe we need to consider doing away with the whole grant part of that and saying, this is a loan, it could be at a low interest, but it's a loan. We expect repayment. And there needs to be some, people need to have some skin in the game, as far as, as that goes. But we need like, you know, how much money was in there five years ago? What's been utilized? And how much money is in there now? And in, in what, what way was any money expended? Was it in loans? Was it in grants? You know, things like that. I, I can't make a decision. I'm, I'm not philosophically opposed to doing it, but we're making a decision without having any idea what we're dealing, what we're working with money-wise.
Well, I would have to say that, you know, like you putting money into your own building is a, and it going into use is a good return on your investment. So-
I don't disagree. I don't-
I think the question, Letitia, is how much money is there for it to put in?
Right, okay.
Is that the appropriate fund that should come from?
Yeah.
To me.
Well, it, it is the facade of the building, so hopefully, yes.
But should we be using those funds to repair a city building?
When-
Or it was really not intended for that purpose? I guess that's my, that's my, my philosophical question.
Well, and I think we also need to understand how facade funds are generated, because they didn't just come out of thin air.
Right. That's kind of my question with the accounting.
Yeah, the background of the facade improvement program was born out of CDBG before the city became an entitlement city. And that money then was transferred into a local fund. That's as much as I know. I don't know the details of that, but that's kind of where the money came from. And since then, it's been a static fund. It hasn't been replenished or anything. And so as it's used, that money is gone. And I don't know if any loan's been used since it had come into play, but it's very underutilized. And I believe that's why it was originally requested to be used, because it was a fund just sitting there that could be utilized to improve a building, a historic building that needed improvement.
Claudia?
Was that fund established by a council ordinance? Does anybody know? Jared, do you have any clue?
It very much predates my time here.
Yeah, I figured as much. I figured as much. So, I mean, all of those things, because here's, my God, I feel like I'm talking at Kmart. I, because my thing is, is if, if that was established by ordinance and by a decision of the, on the council, whatever council that was 100 years ago, and if the use has been minimal, then in my head, the council could change what the purpose with a new ordinance. Am I right? With a new ordinance, the council could decide to do something different with that money. And so, I don't know. I just, it seems like there's just a lot of questions and not a lot of answers.
So, Council, let me just run this by you, because it sounds to me like time is of the essence, a little bit.
Absolutely.
60-day, you have a period of 60 days.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like there's a lot of negative coming from the council on using facade funds if we can use that, and if that is the right thing. So why don't I have staff do some work and find out how this facade funds, and Jim, you probably better take some notes, because you're probably the staff that's going to be doing this.
Yep.
How the facade funds came about. Track down an accounting of what happened the last five years. See what it looks like. See if there's any reason why the council cannot use this money for a facade of the Brady Chapel. And see if we can't get a report to you in the next week, Jim?
In your spare time, Jim.
Yeah, in all that spare time. And then if, if you can get that to us, I mean, it's, I, I believe it's been budgeted, so we would not have a budget amendment. And if the council is, is comfortable with it, I don't even know, Jared, if it needs to come in front of the council, if the council, in another formal meeting, if the council says, yeah, if it's there, let's see what it looks like next week, and, and then they can give some direction. Can, can that happen? We've got two questions, it sounds like, as you're coming up.
No, I'm sorry.
Linda and Josh.
Jared Johnson, City Attorney. So absolutely, Mayor. The, all the, all the background work, I think, is, is relevant and can be provided to council. But then at a, at a formal meeting, that's when the council needs to make that formal decision.
Okay.
Spend that amount of money, or whatever amount is deemed appropriate, make that final formal decision after you have the information that you've asked for.
So that would be probably the first meeting we could do that would, would be August 4?
Yeah, probably.
Is that within your 60-day window?
What's that?
Is August 4 inside your 60-day window?
Um. Sixty days, I can't see my, oh, June 10th.
In which one?
It is, but then, then we're pushed back in the fact that we won't, probably won't have repairs accomplished. I was hoping to give them the notice to proceed so that he could be well underway and maybe have our repairs done for the Idaho Heritage Conference that is being held here in Pocatello. And the Brady Chapel is on the conference. It's, it has tours every day, three, all three days. So-
I just wanted to-
It'd be dangerous to have people there with scaffolding and such. And so it would be really nice if, if we were completed by then.
I, I wanted to shed a little light on the background that, as far as I know, back
close to when I first started on the council, I had conversations with Joyce Stroshine, our CFO at the time, as well as Melanie Giggly, about using these funds, or the possible use of these funds for the Brady Chapel and also for the Greyhound building, which, you know, we had to put all that on hold for other reasons. But both of them said that that fund was an approved, you know, that there was no reason we could not use that fund for either of those buildings, that the work that needed to be done fit within the requirements of that fund. And so, you know, by all means, I, I think, go ahead and look into that and clarify it. But that was the, the answer that I got from our former planning director, as well as our former CFO. At the time, the facade fund had, I think the number Joyce gave me was somewhere 70-something. And then I think small amounts of it were used for grant requests. But other than that, there has been very little activity with that fund ever since I've been on the council. But my conversations with them were all, you know, there was no reason that it couldn't be used. So I think if we confirm that, that would be good. But-
Josh, go ahead. And then, oh, Jared had something, and then Josh, and then Claudia.
Just, just a follow-up to that. And again, I, I don't take a side. I just present options to the council. One thing you could do is approve it conditionally upon Jim finding out that the funds exist in the amount, at least in the amount requested, or some amount higher, if you wanted to set some other threshold, and that it's confirmed that this is an appropriate use of those funds. And that would take care of it in today's meeting, if you were interested in doing that. Just wanted to put that out there.
Can I ask a follow-up? Jared, then. Can, can, can some of that monies that is raised from the Brady Chapel be put back into that fund if we so chose?
Yeah, I believe so.
The reason I say that is because I know it's an underutilized fund, but I'm, I mean, I didn't know this, this was existed. I mean, imagine a world where, does downtown, do downtown business owners know that this fund exists? You know, to what extent are they talked to it? They do?
Yeah.
Probably not. It's not heavily advertised, so.
So-
But Stephanie tells people.
Stephanie knows? Okay, all right. And so if it's underutilized then, then I'm, I'm not as, I'm not, I don't feel strongly either way. I just, I think it's a nice option that I wish businesses used more.
Yep. Claudia?
So I'm just trying to, which one of these giant documents from last week shows any budgeting for this Brady Chapel? Because you guys just said it was in the budget. And I'm just trying to figure out where I can find that. Does anybody?
I see nothing for Brady Chapel.
I don't, I don't either.
What I saw was the, was the, was the facade loan trust balance.
There's not, there is nothing for Brady Chapel, but the facade loan trust balance. What is the number? Does it-
$42,303.
No, but on what line are you looking?
962.
16-2?
962.
962.
962, okay.
And I'm probably cheating a little here. I went in and got some stuff. We're going to get in a little bit from Ann. This is, this is some today's stuff.
That's today? Okay. Because I was going to say, I don't think I have that. Okay.
Okay. And Linda?
I would like to move forward with Jared's suggestion here of, not that you're suggesting we do it, but the option that you said we could do. I, I like that because we are on a tight timeframe for this project. So conditionally approving this, once we clarify what amount is in there and, and that it just confirmed that it can be used in this way. But that would allow us to move forward more quickly, I think would be a good.
Is that a motion? Is that a-
Can I make a motion in this meeting?
Action item.
It's an action item.
Then that's a motion. A messy motion.
I would suggest that you set the, the amount threshold.
Yeah.
So that staff knows whether or not the motion has met the conditions, because the fund is actually funded at X number of dollars, whatever you decide that should be.
Right. Well, and if there's a, I'm a little, I'm sort of wondering what that amount should be, if there's a question of whether it's 42 or 69, and we're, you know, the request is for 65.
Right.
Can it, can the motion be something like, you know, if it turns out it's 42, that-
It could be up to-
That we would, that we would get that?
No, there's, there's some pending requests for some small uses of that fund. I, I believe
they're in the process right now. So you wouldn't want to expend everything that's in the fund.
Right. That's why I think-
So I'm not sure, what amount do we want to, or can we say up to?
I think you could say up to. Could you not? Up to X amount of dollars and-
Well-
With those, those conditions. So I've got Josh, and then I've got Claudia.
Pass on me.
Oh, Claudia.
You can say up to, as long as you have an idea of what the up to is. But if there are pending requests, and we don't even know what that amount is, I'm, I'm just, I feel like I've got a blindfold on and earmuffs, and I'm being asked to, you know, it's not that I don't want this project to go forward, but it's, I cannot make a decision when I don't know how much money out of that fund is pending to be used, how much money is in the fund to begin with. So up to, I mean, we could say up to $5,000, but we don't even know if that's going to be left. I, I can't, I, I, I can't make a decision. And I'm sorry that you're in a time crunch. I, I'm not-
I understand.
I don't know how long it took you guys to get on the agenda in front of us. I wish you'd come to us sooner.
No, we've, we were, we were scheduled to be on your last work session, and we got bumped to this one. But I understand. You know, the, the problem with, you know, like these kinds of situations is, you know, we came to you in December of 2019 and requested the money. And, and were put to task to come up with a plan, and, and we've done that. And at that time, there was $72,000 in the, in the fund. And, and we only had $10,000 ourselves. You know, we've, we've continued to fundraise, and we've, and we've come up with more money. But the, the problem is, is that the building, as it sits there, is called demolition by neglect. And as we sit on our hands, the building continues to deteriorate, you know, not at a fast rate. It's, it hit its 100-year anniversary this year on Memorial Day. It's just that if we don't do anything, we're our own worst enemies.
And I completely understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree. But what, the position that we're in today is to write a check that may bounce, because we have no idea how much money is going to be left in that fund when these pending requests. I mean, there might be $65,000 left, but we have zero idea, zero. And so I, so I, I mean, I get it. And I don't know why it took you guys a month to get on, to get in front of us, or why you got bumped. I don't control any of that. But I just can't really make, we don't know anything.
Okay, Josh?
Do we have a general idea of what we're talking about in pending requests? Are we talking 50 grand, or are we talking five?
I believe it's, and Jim could verify this, I believe it's two requests for $500 each.
Okay. Was yours a formal motion? If not, I have one that I think might satisfy some-
I, it was a motion, but it never got seconded. It's so-
Just a minute, just a minute. Brent has stepped up like he had something to say here.
Well, I just, just wanted to talk about the fund itself a little bit. So currently, it is budgeted, the, the budget for this year for expenditure is 72, 682. That's what has been budgeted to be allowed to be expended out of this fund for this year. Currently, the, the actual expenditure for this year, it shows 79, or 7,962. 5,000 of that was pulled out of this fund for a historic preservation activity that actually needs to be transferred back into this fund from my budget, that it was misallocated. So we're in process of, of rectifying that. So essentially, $2,962 have been, has been used from this fund this year.
And so why is your number $30,000 higher than the number that Rick has in front of him? And that's what we're going to be seeing today. I'm really confused by that.
We talked with Finance today, and the numbers that we were given for the budget today, if we put that $5,000 back in, was-
69,000.
69,000.
Rick, your number's 32?
42.
42. I mean, that's still, even with your 5,000, that's still a huge gap.
I don't know, where'd you get that number from?
From Ann, the budget sheet.
Well, that's for this year's, that's 23. So I'm just talking, that's what our Finance Department is telling us that we have in the fund right now. And so-
FY22.
FY22.
Well, but see, that, this is kind of my concern, is, is I understand Finance is telling you this, and we are going to be dealing with a budget today that says 42,000. We know, that's a huge discrepancy. I mean, I'm hoping it's the 72, but if it's 28, then we're in a pickle, and we're going to be committing, and we don't have, we're going to write a check that's going to bounce. And that's not fair, and it's not responsible. So I'm, I'm, I got issues.
Did you have a suggestion?
I have a motion that I think is the only motion I think is possible. I would move that we authorize the use of the $65,000 funds from the facade improvement program with the following three conditions. Number one- Number one, that the, the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars for this program exists. Number two, that the amount budgeted or authorized for this agenda item, in addition to the pending or planned requests, does not exceed the total funds amount in that fund. So if, for example, that, I'll finish, and, but, and condition number three, that the five thousand dollars used for the historic preservation is transferred out of the planning budget in, back into the facade improvement project as planned. Uh, I think the reason this works is because if that number of forty thousand is a discrepancy based on planned expenses in FY twenty-three, then this second condition of not exceeding the pending or planned requests should be a trigger in order to prevent that from being overspent.
Second.
Jared, does that sound right in terms of, let's say, for whatever reason, those planned expenses come out to, that, that, that we could, that, that would invalidate this motion or the approval of?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest just one more condition if I, that, for your consideration, and that'd be that we confirm that this is an authorized use of these funds.
And number four, that we confirm that this is an authorized use of forms, for, for, of funds. Those are the four conditions I have on that.
Do you have those written down?
Yeah, I do. Are you asking mayor or me?
No, I'm asking.
Yeah, I'll say it one more time. Number one.
Fine.
Okay.
Go ahead.
That the amount of sixty-five thousand dollars in the facade improvement program fund is present. Number two, that the sixty-five thousand dollars, in addition to any plan, planned or pending requests, does not exceed the total amount in the facade improvement program fund as it sits. Number, sorry?
Hold on a second, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to catch it.
Yep, you're fine.
Doesn't exceed, okay, no, okay, sorry, go ahead.
You're good. Number three, that the five thousand dollars that has been stated that will be moved out of, is it the planning budget?
Yeah, from the.
From the planning budget, back into the facade improvement program does occur.
Okay.
And number four, that we confirm the legality of the use of facade improvement program funds for a city-owned property.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we also have a second by Lyric, discussion, council.
I think that covers it.
The facade funds.
I tried to be thorough.
Okay, just, just a minute, did you get all four of those?
I am, I am, I'm just, legal use of funds.
So the one thing I wonder is if, the way it's phrased, if the sixty-five thousand dollars is there, goes to them, could it, if there, I think it ought to be if there's sixty-five thousand dollars remaining after we've serviced these other two entities, that we do it.
Do you feel like that second condition covers that?
Yes, I do.
That's the point of that second condition, is that when you take the sixty-five and add in the other planned or, or requested funds, that it has, it cannot exceed the total fund balance.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lyric. Connie, would you call that role?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lyric?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Sheem?
Yes.
Ortega?
Uncomfortable, I'm really uncomfortable doing this, it's just, I'm gonna say no.
Okay, so Jim, I need you to get us an accounting for that, get us that list of stuff, so the council can see that next week.
Sorry.
Yep.
And make sure that everybody understands it and knows what's there, and we're good.
And that could actually, mayor, be sent out just to the council as a follow-up to today's discussion.
Okay.
Because the action will happen automatically if the conditions are met. And if you would like Jim and myself and staff to just firm that determination.
Please.
That would be great. If you'll do that and then send it out, so that, the sooner the better.
But I still want to know about, like, the five years and what's been used, and I still want to know all that, okay?
Yeah.
And I think it's incumbent now, because we're pretty much depleting this fund, to see if it's necessary and it needs to be replenished in some way.
Right.
That's, that's, that's an action that falls as council.
That's why I want to know what the use has been, because if, if it's not utilized except for five hundred dollars here and there, then we've just got money sitting in a fund, not making any interest. So anyway, I, I still am gonna want to know that, Jim.
Yep, if we can get all that, that'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to this next item, because I think this is gonna be a long one, could we please take a break?
Uh, we can, yeah, so we'll go ahead and break right now for a few minutes. I still got a thumbs up, all right, here we go. Thank you very much for joining us after the break, we'll go ahead and continue on with agenda item number six, is the Pocatello sign code revisions. Planning and Development Services staff will be in attendance to discuss proposed changes to the city's sign code.
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor and council, Jim Engle, senior long-range planner for the city of Pocatello. You have in your packet a memo as well as a draft to a new, what we're proposing for a new sign code. Kind of a brief history, our current sign code was adopted in nineteen ninety-one, with some changes throughout up until twenty eighteen. As planning staff, we feel that the sign code is severely outdated and needs to be updated. And I'm, I'm sure, with the time you guys have been in council, that you've seen sign exceptions come through that you may feel that would necessitate a change in the sign code as well. And so we provided a, a draft for you, for your review, and we'd like to get feedback on that. Some of the highlights in this, in this new code are the following. We're proposing to repeal the existing sign code and replace it with our, our proposed draft. Second, they propose to move the current sign code, which is in Title fifteen, building in construction, into Title seventeen, the zoning ordinance. Next, we would like to remove regulating face changes as they do not change the location or size of a sign, and make that so that they no longer require a permit, as well as vinyl window signage and painted wall signage, to not require a licensed sign contract to install those, since they don't present any harm or proposed, or potential harm to the public. Application fees for vinyl window signage is currently at the regular sign fee of seventy-five dollars. We'd like to reduce that in the future. And we currently regulate murals and other displays that don't technically constitute a sign. We'd like to do away with that and no longer require a permit for murals and, and other displays. Then, within the historic district, we would still require certificates of appropriateness for new signage and displays, but window signage or face changes are things that don't affect the historic integrity of a, of a building, to make that so that they do not require a certificate of appropriateness. We've also changed a lot in our RCP zoning district to allow for more signage and sign options. You may remember that some recent sign exceptions in our RCP zoning district or professional office buildings that were really reduced and, and constrained the types of sign or the amount of sign in that, in those zoning districts or types of buildings. And so we, we've changed, proposed to change a lot of that. We've also are proposing that off-premise signs are no longer permitted, but we've differentiated that from billboards, where billboards are permitted, but other non-billboard type off-premise signs would not. That is a summary of, of what we're proposing. I welcome any questions the council may have.
Okay, questions, Linda?
The part about the murals, so you're saying this new code would not require permits or permission for murals, but what about in the historic?
They would still be required in the historic district.
Still certificates of appropriateness?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Rick?
I'd like to see something in the sign code about political signs. I, I read the whole thing, and frankly, it's a, it's a big read. And with the concentration on budgeting, I don't feel like I was able to give this proposal its due thrift. But I didn't see anything about political, and I think we need to get a handle on those.
We, we consider political signs temporary signs, which are permitted sixty days, half the year and sixty days the next, so total one hundred and twenty days out of the year, they're permitted.
But their locations are what concern me.
Okay, yeah, right now, we have a policy, as far as what's in the right-of-way, political signs in the right-of-way are permitted at two specific intersections, Jefferson and Oak and South Valley and South.
Is that ordinance?
That is not ordinance.
I think it should be. I think there needs to be some teeth in that to control the proliferation. I hate to admit, you know, I've used some of those reluctantly, just because my competitor did. And I, I, I think we need to get a handle on those.
I agree with that, I think it's, Jared and I had a somewhat protracted discussion about this. And, you know, I think, I mean, Jared, you know, you, I'm sure you know what you said to me better than I remember it, but with something about de facto, the city has given permission. And I, I'm not a big de facto fan when it comes to, to, you know, making decisions about how things are done, because, you know, that, it just leaves it wide open. It's some people, you know, because in, in the, what's handed out to candidates, it says that if your signs are in unacceptable locations, you know, they'll be picked up. Sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't happen, so I think it needs to be clarified. So I'm on board with Rick.
So I got Roger, then Claudia.
This is probably the situation that comes up the most before the council in my time on it. We have done more revisions to sign ordinance than anything else I, I know of. We have done more meetings with exceptions than anything I know of. So I think really working to standardize even more and be clear, because evidently, the way our ordinance is currently written is not clear enough to, to define for people what their opportunities are and what they aren't. And so I really welcome the idea of clarifying this. I also think that it's important to, because technically, what I'm reading here is every time somebody paints their window for a season, they're supposed to get permitted.
If it's temporary, permits not required.
Well, you know, but what I'm saying though is.
Vinyl window lettering and stuff.
Yeah, but I'm, and here, it's changed, but what exists now.
Yeah.
Technically.
Right.
So just all those changes I think are important to make.
Yeah.
Claudia?
So I'm, I'm really with Rick on this, this is like overwhelming to me at this point in time. I wish we weren't even talking about this today, to be honest with you, no offense to anybody who worked on this. I know it's a lot of work, but I need more time to like sit and read it. But I guess I have one question is, what are we gonna do about the visual clutter on Yellowstone? I mean, I don't see, I didn't, I didn't read it in detail, detail, but I don't see anything that addresses, I mean, all that, all that ugly is gonna get just grandfathered in, right? I mean, I, I think that this conversation is gonna require, there's a lot more to it, because if we're, if, I mean, if, if the whole point is to reduce visual clutter and, and distraction, then I think we need to, I, I think we need to consider not grandfathering all this, I mean, there's no rhyme or reason to what's going on on Yellowstone. Zero, zero. And I get that that's not you, or, or Brent, or anybody else, but at some point, if we want to have an aesthetic to this city, this council is gonna have to have the courage to say, we're gonna have to draw a hard line in the sand and say, I'm sorry, but you're gonna have to, you've got six months to replace that sign with something that, something, but I, I just don't, I just wish we weren't having this conversation today, because my brain is on the budget and, and it, this is a lot to absorb.
I agree with Claudia a hundred percent. I, this, this was the number one campaign issue when Lyric and I were elected five years ago, and it has been the most controversial single thing I've, I've had people approach me on in the last five years as a council member, is signage. And how to apply the existing ordinance, or is it an exception? What do we do, how can we help? It, it's a, I mean, our, I, I don't know what the answer is, but I think we're all concentrating on budget right now.
Yep.
And I think this deserves more attention than we've been able to give it so far. I would love to see this come back as maybe an exclusive study session item in September, when we're through concentrating on budget, and we can really sit down with a hard copy and go over this thing line by line and talk about not only what it says, but what it means. And that's where I had a hard time taking what you've written and trying to find what it means in the community to business owners and to, to residents of our area. It was overwhelming, I agree with you.
And I, and I think.
And I, I think, I think we need to put this off.
I think it's a distraction at this point in time.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, again, I'm not trying to offend anybody who worked on it, but it's very distracting at this point in time.
It sounds to me, it's pretty obvious to me that the council really truly would like a couple months, you've got it now, couple months, read it, study it, look at it.
What a hard copy.
Then in a few, we'll get you a hard copy then.
We're not in a rush.
And then in a few, in a few months, we'll bring it back to a study session and have that, and have that discussion, have this discussion, and so, I don't think there's any rush necessarily for it, but I think it's just a matter of, of getting it going and stuff like that. And so with that, I, I had Chris, then I had Linda, then I had Josh, and then I had Rick.
Okay.
Roger.
I'm in agreement that I'm like, you know, breathing through a straw at this point, but I do appreciate the fact that it came before us, because now it's on our radar. We know it needs to be dealt with, it's important. So I think that there was value in putting it on an agenda, so it forced us to focus on it, so I appreciate that. And then, and then just FYI, I have some, if I heard you correctly, and if I read this correctly, apart from the historic district, it seems as though murals are now kind of free range. And I'm just wondering, you know, I can imagine all kinds of very interesting images and content that could appear on buildings if there's no process other than, hey, the person that owns the building said, have at it. So I'm, I'm concerned about that, because I think it's difficult, for example, to say, well, but is it graffiti or is it art? The fact that it references a gang, I mean, it's just making a contemporary comment on, on the state of affairs. I mean, it just gets legally, to me, it gets legally into a, a thicket.
So write that down and be prepared to talk about that in, in a couple months. Linda?
I just wanted to comment on the idea of, and it was your first point that you made, repealing the entire current code and replacing it. And I, I mean, I agree with Rick that this has been, you know, arguably one of the most controversial issues since we've been on the council. And I think one of the problems that we've faced, and even before we were on the council, I, I remember attending meetings where there, you know, it was discussed, and it was a hugely controversial issue. And I think one of the problems is the way that it has been handled piecemeal, you know, just as something came up, then we looked at that portion, or, you know. And so I think that's been one of the, the challenges to having a, you know, an, an updated cohesive code, and really kind of looking at the whole thing and how it works together, is just trying to sort of address little pieces and parts of it along. to sort of address little pieces and parts of it along the way. So I commend you for approaching it as a whole and looking at, you know, replacing the entire thing. But I do agree with what's been said about wanting time to really think about that, and because that's going to be a huge task, but I feel like it's ultimately the best way to get a good, you know, complete code, that it doesn't, you know, sort of have all these inherited issues. So I think that's a good approach.
All right. Roger, not Rick?
Okay. One of the things that I appreciated was the, a line that says the aesthetic value within the city and contingent to the city. From my, I think we need to have, rather than a strict time when the lighted signs go off that are flashing, you know, the changing message boards and stuff, because you could be running just a little past sunset in the summer, and you can be running a lot past sunset at other times of the year. And I noticed from my, where I live, I get a view across from the west bench, across the valley, the tempo is constant. It's lighted, and it's aesthetic, but at the same time, it's detracted by the signs that flash, you know, and there are two or three signs that just, you can see them for miles. And I think it interrupts the aesthetic quality of our city. So somehow, we got to think that through better. And I don't know how, but I'm suggesting that we spend some time thinking that through.
Yeah. Josh?
With your additional work, would you be able to provide some visual representations under the major changes? For example, this billboard on Yellowstone would no longer be permissible. This one would be. So we, I can just, I mean, you can put 32 square feet and certain number of, you know, lighting measurements, but that doesn't mean anything to me. So, yeah, I'd love pictures.
I don't know what 32 square feet looks like.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Pictures worth a thousand words.
Okay, so, yes.
And I also think, and I'm sure, given how your department worked with the comprehensive plan and getting input and stuff, I'm sure that that's either happened, or, you know, what is in the plan, the ultimate plan. But I really think, including business owners, and I'm specifically thinking of Yellowstone, because it's not, I mean, there's one perspective, that the more attractive a shopping district is, the more likely people are to spend time there, you know, just kind of browsing versus going there only under duress. And, but there's another perspective that says, hey, if Joe's sign is this big, then, you know, I need to make my sign twice as big to overpower Joe. And, and so I think having some conversation about what are the many positives, you know, in terms of economic development, not just visual quality, but in terms of economic development, in terms of making us aesthetically competitive with other cities in our region that have taken this on. You know, I think, I think that would be a good idea, because, first of all, it doesn't leave you folks in the crosshairs, because there are going to be people who are going to say, hey, I own this property, you know, government should stay out of my business, period, the end, you know. And so I don't want staff to be the scapegoats. And I also want us to focus on the intention here, which is positive for the community, and not have it get sidetracked down the rail, down the rail by, you know, by controversy and emotional blowups and all that stuff.
And to help prevent that, so far, we've reached out to the license sign contractors in the city to get their feedback, and we have received feedback, and it's, have integrated into this draft.
But we didn't see those comments, did we? I didn't see them in here.
No, you have not. We could provide that. I'd like that.
So we got Linda, and then Claudia.
This just made me think of something that I've actually been meaning to ask you about, Jim. Some, a type of sign that I'm seeing more often, and I'm just curious about where it falls in terms of permanent signage versus temporary signage and everything, but I see new businesses move into a space, and there's an existing sign from a previous business, and they put up like a banner over that sign, or one of those, it's almost like a giant bag that is tied on top of that sign. And I assumed when I first saw things like that, that that was just a temporary solution until they, you know, got settled and got their permanent sign up. But I've seen signs like that that have stayed over a year, yes. And so I'm wondering, like, where does that fall within our code? And do we have some recourse of, I mean, is there a time limit on how long a sign lasts? I mean, they look very temporary to me, and I don't think they look good. And I'm just kind of wondering, you know, what, what is our policy on that? And can we think about that? If we don't have some kind of time limit or policy on that in our current code, can we address that in our revised version?
Yeah, bags and banners are temporary, and they should only be there for 60 days.
60 days. Well, I know of.
I do, too.
Several that are way longer than that.
Yeah, I do, too.
Claudia?
And the other thing I'd like to, when we do have a study session to talk about this, I want to talk about the inflatable stuff, like the gorillas, the statues of liberty, the these guys, and the flags that, you know, those long banners that are right up along the roadway. I want to talk about those, too.
Sure.
When we have that study session.
And in that train of thought, what's the penalties for violation of these various codes? I read all this, and I saw nothing that specified what happens if you're in violation, or how we enforce it. So I'm curious about that when we get to the.
That's in there. There's an enforcement section, but the violation of the sign code is a misdemeanor that could be, every day is a separate offense. There have been questions on how we enforce that, because we essentially only have one person that oversees the sign code that have other responsibilities other than doing code enforcement every day. Because, you know, I've been in that position, and you fix one thing, you turn around, there's three other problems. And so it's, part of this is trying to reduce the amount that we enforce, so that we can actually enforce what's going on.
But now we have more code enforcement.
Doesn't a lot of that fall back on the sign contractor? He knows what the law is. He's building the signs. Isn't it really his responsibility?
Yeah, as a licensed sign contractor, if you're installing something, you're, you're subject to the sign code, and if you violate, you know, your licensure, then you could lose your license in the city. But when we're looking at code enforcement, we, we're trying to do that, but really, we contact the property owner first, because we don't always know who the sign contractor was that installed something that is the offense.
Well, we should if it's permitted, shouldn't we?
Right, they had to get a permit.
Yeah. And usually, if, sometimes they don't, and when we go after it, we have to track down who put it up, did the property owner allow it? And it's a dance that usually lasts more than a couple of months.
Chris?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have, I think, the equivalent of two additional code enforcement people, if you assume that each one of the, of the animal control officers is spending 50% of their time on animals, and, you know. So, so, and I think, again, it's culture. Code enforcement, from my perspective, and based on the comments that I get over and over and over again, code enforcement across the board in town, other than parking, it has been lackadaisical, would be a complimentary way of labeling it. And so I believe that over decades, because, I mean, I read an article from 15 years ago that where I think the last city manager got in hot water, because I believe he referred to Pocatello as the weed capital of Idaho, or the world, or something, and that offended people. So this has been an issue. And for decades, I believe, we've, we have enabled and contributed to, by we, I mean the city in general, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, we've enabled this attitude that, yeah, whatever, you know, park there, don't park there, you know, park a, you know, a vehicle that's not allowed on the street, on the street, nobody's going to really do anything, and et cetera. So we've built the culture that we now have, and, and we're going to have to unbuild it. And out there in the world, the wisdom is that to create change, you basically need to have three, minimum of three interactions for, you know, to, for every one interaction that is in the groove. And so I think this is a, I mean, I think this needs to have a publicity campaign with it. You know, that's part of why I think getting the business owners on board, because they're the ones ultimately who can decide not to put something inappropriate on their property. But I think if this is going to happen, if we're going to do it, then we need to do it right. And we need to support your effort. And if we're not going to support your effort, and if we're going to just put it on paper and then proceed, you know, as we have for decades, then I think we're wasting your time, and we're wasting taxpayers' money having you work on something that isn't going to make a darn bit of difference.
Sure.
And that's not on you. You know, I'm just saying, that's kind of how the world works.
Okay, I've got Linda, and then Claudia.
I just have a quick question about the code enforcement issue, because I didn't know if that had changed. The sign, the enforcement of sign code was not done in the past by, I mean, it was done by planning staff, not done by our code enforcement people. With our new setup with code enforcement, has that shifted? Or is it still under?
I haven't heard any conversation otherwise, other than planning's enforcement.
So you're still the ones doing this? Okay.
Claudia?
Can, can I just go back to Rick's suggestion that we put this, the rest of this conversation, because we can keep going for hours, I can see it happening, on this? Can we put this off until we're done with budgeting, and then have one session where we just go through every single item, and everybody in between now and like September, everybody can make a list? I mean, we can email you, right? We individually, and say, hey, think about this, look at this, whatever, so that then when we have that study session, because we're going to spend another hour talking about this, and I really don't want to. I mean, I really.
Well, I can just tell you, for a half hour, I've been trying to get us to that very point.
Okay, I know, but I really, I don't want to be talking about this anymore.
And I don't want to cut anybody off.
No, and I appreciate that, but we need to, we need to stop.
So, so, let the record be known, Claudia has stopped the discussion.
That was me this time.
With that, Jim, thank you very much. We will be back in a few months, and you can be working on this, and the council can be getting you the stuff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim and Brant, for all the work that.
Okay, so we'll move to agenda item number seven, which is the Highway Pond Ox Bowl Grant, Science and Environment. Public Works staff members will present information to the council regarding submission of a $5 million grant application to the National Fish and Wildlife Federation. The city of Pocatello would be a subcontractor to the Idaho Department of Land's IDL. Council will be asked to ratify a letter of support to the IDL at the August 4, 2022 regular council meeting. The city match commitment is 10%, of which 2.5% will be a cash match. If awarded, matching funds will be sought through external funding sources.
$500,000.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff Mansfield, Public Works Director and City Engineer for the city of Pocatello. Hannah Singer was not able to be here today. She's, she's on vacation. So the mayor pretty much summed it up. I am here to stand for any questions you might have. This is a grant we just found out about at the end of June, so kind of a tight turnaround on this. It's a $5 million grant, and has to be administered through the state of Idaho. And to our knowledge, we're the only ones that's currently chase, that are currently chasing this particular grant. So we feel like we have a pretty good opportunity here. The intent of the Oxbows would be to create wetlands and flow through channel to capture sediment, and create about 100 acres of wetlands and riparian habitat there along the Port Nap River and the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. So I'd stand for any questions that anybody has on this.
So we're going to go Rick, then Josh.
Chris wants in, too.
And then Chris.
Has, I got a couple of questions. Has the railroad agreed? Has there been any discussion with the railroad so far?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, that's something that we'd have to start negotiating with the railroad in order to.
So to answer that question, Hannah brought this in front of me last week, and we said we've got to get this on. In fact, it was a rush to get it on the agenda today. But she had sent me an email Tuesday that said, I'm working on one, on a letter of support from UPRR, and I'm working to pull together a wetland team to do the planning. And so this is literally a work in progress. The issue that we are running into is, the deadline is the day after next Thursday's meeting. Hasn't been brought in front of the council, and so I had to get it in front of the council this week, so that you could at least see this and comment and do this. It is a work in progress. Hannah did say that the Idaho Department of Lands has given us the official green light to move forward on this application. And so I don't know that we will, I mean, it sounds like we'll get it, but I think the Department of Lands needs to get it before we can be awarded it, but they have to have somebody to use the money if they apply for it.
Let me expand on that. Is there a use deadline of these funds at the railroad, with what we have seen in the past dragging their feet could potentially spoil?
So it's my understanding that we have four years to utilize, to execute with the funds.
To actually contract or execute?
To get the funds used.
Okay.
Yeah.
The second part, by creating these oxbows, are we creating a future cost of dredging those oxbows to remove silt down the road?
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're removing sediment, then the ultimate long-term maintenance of that would be to, would be to remove that sediment periodically.
Are we, is that, is that something we can do internally, or would we need a contractor to do that?
It's possibly something we could do internally, but if we had some grant funding to help pay for that, then it may be something we look at having a contractor do.
Thank you.
Josh? I have three questions. The first, when is the, when will we be notified of the award of said grant? Do we know?
I don't know the answer to that. This will be coming back to the council on August 4, and so you'll be able to get more information at that time.
Okay. And, and so I guess, I'll wait for my second question until that time. My third one, if we are awarded said grant, the acceptance of that grant would have to come before council again, correct?
Yes.
So if, for whatever reason, the outs, external funding sources that have been indicated in the memo are pretty confident that we will get, if those aren't available, we will have the opportunity at the time of the acceptance of grant to decide how we would match that grant. And that, you know, just to ratify the letter of support and application to IDL does not commit us to those funds immediately, correct?
Not immediately.
Great.
Chris?
Yeah, I believe these are essentially a restoration of the oxbows that were there.
Correct.
Originally. And I, my impression was that at least some of that was on city-owned property, not.
Correct.
Entirely. How much of it is actually on the railroad property?
I don't know the answer to that. I'd have to, I'd have to look at that and see.
Because my, my impression was that those oxbows were on that chunk that the, that the city owns between the highway and the railroad. And so there may not be, you know, any huge concessions or agreements needed relative to the railroad. And then I believe it was the Army Corps that wanted that straightened, is that correct? Those oxbows taken out? Is that, how did that originally, how did they originally, why did they originally go away?
Railroad. Railroad.
Okay, but it must have been a. Okay, but it must have been a request because they don't own the, they don't own all of the property, for sure.
They they needed it to make a straight railroad, so they shut those oxbows off.
Right, but there's still a chunk of land there within which oxbows could be created now that we know where the railroad runs. So so I think the railroad issue is not going to be so.
But we have to go underneath the railroad for these culverts. That's where the potential problem could be.
I and I don't know that. I don't know enough about the design.
There'd be two culverts put underneath the railroad to put the water in and take it back out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
I got Josh and then Roger.
What, I know this is an action item, is there any action that is needed from the council today?
Approving the letter of support?
That's that's August 4.
That will be August 4.
Yeah, yeah.
That will be ratified in that letter. Today, I just wanted you to, I wanted you to know that this was out there, that this would be coming in front of you. I mean, it's a big number, $5 million and 10%, and that's a big number. And and Hannah literally was saying, look, I've got to get this done, I won't be there. Can somebody please let the council know what this is? If they're not interested in doing this at all, then I don't, then I want to stop. But this is gives us an opportunity, and and that's where this came from. I mean, you know about as much as I think Jeff and I know about it, quite frankly, right now.
Yeah, it was pretty quick. Basically, what we'll be doing is we'll be asking you to to ratify a letter of support to the Idaho Department of Lands at the August 4 council meeting.
Is that a commitment? Like Josh asked, is that a commitment?
Well, so there will be a memorandum of understanding with Idaho Department of Lands. If we're awarded this grant, there will be a memorandum of understanding that will need to be executed in the fall of 2022 with Idaho Department of Lands.
Access to Hannah.
And then is $5 million enough to accomplish this?
So that was the other part of that.
I know that, but is $5 million going to accomplish it?
So that's the other part of that memo is that if if construction costs exceed the $5 million, the National Fish and Wildlife Federation said they've got more money, that they can, they can increase that amount if we need it to be.
Do we?
Roger?
I have a question in regards to the highway pond, when it filled several years ago, became a detriment to our groundwater. And and the, it got nitrates into the soil. And are we going to be able to remediate some of that effect from the highway pond, or will we exasperate it?
Yeah, I don't think there will be any connectivity to the highway pond with this. So, yeah.
But I mean, just putting water in there, it seems to be very porous soil, and it could fill the highway pond.
This is below the pond, though. This is on the other side of the freeway. Actually, the, it's it's below the pond, it's on the same side of the freeway as the pond is, isn't it?
So, but I mean, groundwater doesn't know whether it's below or it just levels. And so I really think that's an issue for us because the bird defecation out there was part of that nitrate. And we really need to be certain we're not hurting ourselves by doing something good.
Right.
So, okay. Yeah, Linda?
So you mentioned our chances, you felt, or Hannah feels, that our chances of getting this grant are really good. I wanted to ask about our chances of getting the match money through external funding, as it says here. As the mayor pointed out, the the match, you know, 10% of $5 million is is a lot of money. Do we feel good about being able to find external sources for that?
So, you know, per Hannah's memo, she says, staff members are confident that we can find outside funding for this match.
Okay. And the cash match is 12 and a half, 12,500.
125,000.
100, I mean, I'm sorry, 125,000. Yeah.
So, but Hannah Hannah did say that she was very, very confident that money would come from the external people. That's, that's, she was extremely confident.
And then the rest is match? I mean, the rest is in kind, or?
So the other, the other 7.5% would be staff time, in-kind services type stuff.
Chris?
Yeah, I mean, this, I'm removing sediment from the Portniv is a critical component to the river vision, because I hear over and over again, I mean, I've gotten in that water and survived. Mud isn't really, you know, mud and muddy water isn't necessarily a huge health hazard, but a lot of people look at that water and and, you know, they make all kinds of assumptions. So if the river vision is to move forward and become more than a pipe dream, then I think these are the kinds of things we need to do. And if we're not willing to come up, you know, with with match money, and if we're going to say if we can't get a match from external services or external sources, and we're not able to budget in a way that, you know, does incremental set-asides, I mean, it's not that much money when you look at what else we spend, even if we have to pay, you know, a significant portion of the match. It's not that much money when you look at what else, how much we spend on other things. And so I I say either the comprehensive plan, the river vision means something, or they don't. And if they mean something, then we need to start putting our money where our mouths are.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is there any way to calculate the potential value of this project for Portniv River Aqua for Recharge?
Honestly, I don't think you're going to get a lot of recharge out of it, any more so than you do the river. It's not really intended to be a recharge project. So I personally, I don't, I don't feel like there's going to be a lot of recharge from this.
Okay. Sounds like the railroad's part of this is the culverts going under the railroad tracks. And so that's where the railroad's going to have a come apart. But if we can get them on board, it sounds like Hannah has the letter of support from the tribe as well. And so it's extremely rushed, and I don't like really rushed things like this. But when you find out about something like this, and that's it, then that's it.
You move it or lose it.
Yeah.
Hannah did a great job turning it around right before she went on vacation. So I appreciated the effort that she put into it to to find it and then pursue it, so.
Okay. All righty. Then thank you, thank you, Jeff. With that, we're going to, before we move to agenda item eight, we'll take a break for a few minutes, so Ann and Heather can get set up and and do what they need to do. Got the thumbs up from Ken. Thank you very much for joining us after the break. We'll go ahead and jump into agenda item eight, fiscal year budget discussion. Council will consider the fiscal year 2023 budget and discuss recommendations to prepare the budget amounts necessary to meet notice requirements for the August 4, 2022 public hearing. Roger's got something to.
Well, I just want to bring up the fact that the council approved a resolution in 2017 that kind of directs how we're supposed to to follow policy for that financial establishment. There are many criteria in there, I'm not going to enumerate them all. But since this council has not acted to change this policy at all, I believe it's still in effect. We had an opportunity to have a group meet and to study this, but that was never actuated. And so this policy, which has many different things in it, talks about how we shouldn't be spending reserve funds for ongoing expenses. It talks about how we should be projecting out for not just the year ahead, but years ahead. We're supposed to do that in terms of expenses and revenues. I think they're all critical, critically important things for us to address. And to just ignore what a council unanimously approved and the mayor has signed, I do not believe puts us on good financial ground. And so I would call our attention to this policy and how it was established, and that we should be akin to paying attention to it and allowing it to guide our process.
I I need to point out right from the get-go that I'm not comfortable, I mean, I'm happy that we're having this presentation, but I'm not going to be comfortable until I see both expenditures. We have the CBAs, we know what those are projected over the next couple of years. I'm assuming that, however, the new salary proposal affects, any of that can be figured out. We can use guestimates, I believe, for what steps would cause and what CPI would result based on the new salary schedule. And I absolutely believe that it, I would be irresponsible, and to use one of Jared's favorite phrases, derelict in my duty, if I pretended that making a budget decision in a one-year silo is anything other than absolutely not in the best interest of city employees, of taxpayers, or the city in general. So I I just need to say that, that I'm not going anywhere until I get projections. The other thing I want to point out is that according to parliamentary procedure, and this is just a heads up, not just for today, that the process that was used last year to end discussion by calling the question is, was actually not done properly according to parliamentary procedure. If there is a motion to curtail a discussion, it requires a 2/3 yes vote from the body. So I'm just pointing that out so that we hopefully don't go down that trail.
Okay, now, thank you very much for the statements, council. We'll go ahead and get our 2023 budget build salary projections from Heather.
It's still morning, so that's a good sign for us. So good morning, my name's Heather Buchanan, I'm the Human Resources Director. Holly from Human Resources will also be joining me, she just ran to grab a little bit more data. So I'm here to talk about the salary side of the budget. So when the salary side of the budget, it's built in what we call salary projections. I just want to explain how this piece fits into the budget that we're talking about as a whole. The green bar that Ann has over here, I've run out of room in my office to put them on a certain shelf, because it needs to be about this deep. So the numbers that Ann presented last week and the numbers I'm presenting again today, they are already included in the budget, so there is no increased cost. I just want to be clear, I'm not coming in and asking for another X amount of dollars. There is slight differences between salary projections and budgets, so Rick and Roger both like to bust out their calculators, and I'm going to tell you right now, that's probably going to make your brain a little fuzzy. So in salary projections, when we pull the summary reports, it pulls it by department. So where your position was created and housed is where your numbers show up. When we plug that into the budget, it takes each individual person's line item that they're charged to, or their split of line items, and pushes it into those budget lines. So there will be slight discrepancies. An example that you're going to see is when we talk about ambulance costs for the fire contract. Our chief is housed in fire, the position, but there is a funding split. When you look at the numbers here, they're going to show in fire. When you see the numbers Ann presents, it's delineated out between the lines that it's charged to. So there will be a little bit of ebb and flow. The overall numbers match, but some of the details are a little murky between the two files, just because of the reports we pull. They are accurate in the budget, which is what controls here. So new positions, I was not here for the last meeting, my family had to ride to Laramie and listen to the budget meeting, they were all very excited for that opportunity. So new positions was one of the things that was asked, just a total cost. So again, this is just numbers that are already in the budget. The eight new positions that are being considered come in at 626,000. On the right, I've broken down just some notes. I did make a change in that bottom right column that you can see above you, that's for Skylar's position in transit. That is grant funded, and I didn't need to say rural, not general fund. So that is a difference between the presentation you have printed in front of you and the one I'm giving today. So again, these positions are included in the budget numbers discussed last week. I know there was extensive conversations on quite a few of them, I just wanted to give you a summary page because it was requested.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Mayor. On that page, Heather, while you're there, I'm noticing a discrepancy in benefits between these various positions. The salaries appear pretty comparable, but the benefits are dramatically different. Could you explain that?
One of the biggest benefits that we talk about is what kind of percy they have. Police's percy costs more than a general employee's percy. Also, workers' compensation, we have a modifier of 85% times the salary. And then there's another percentage that you don't see. Ann would, Ann's glaring at me right now because I can't remember the exact name of the code, but it's a percentage assigned to a position based on its function that then we multiply against to get the cost, the estimated cost of workers' comp for that position. So that's a lot of your discrepancies that you're seeing. When you look at the ad pays, again, like the police officers on this sheet is an example, those are CBA-driven, so we're contractually bound on those.
Well, I guess my my curiosity is, the machinist fabrication welder is a slightly lower salary, but a substantially higher benefit.
It has a higher workers' compensation code.
Ah, okay.
It's at a higher percentage than an officer, I was surprised by that as well.
Really?
It's been a learning curve year for me, too. But yeah, there are discrepancies, even if you have two of the same positions, same pay grade, same step, when you get to those benefit costs, there are a little bit of fluctuation there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I wanted, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, just an info question.
Chris?
So what, what, going back to your first page, what does it mean? It says AG-ICAC money, just.
So there's external funding for one of the police officer requests, that's the Attorney General ICAC investigator.
Okay.
That's a revenue that's coming in to cover the cost of that position.
Okay. But that's for how many more years?
I believe until they, if they revoke funding, then the matter would come before council for consideration.
All right. And where does the the cops, are you going to talk about the the fact that we're going to be increasingly liable for the police officers, the five police officers?
I believe the cops grant was discussed thoroughly at the last meeting.
Right.
I'm not here to just to discuss that grant.
Well, I just need to know what the numbers are.
I don't have those numbers.
Okay, well, the chief is here, perhaps he can give it, I mean, I just need within this context.
What the increase is. We're paying a higher percentage.
Yeah.
So you're looking for the increase?
Well, because as the grant funding decreases, my understanding was that the grant funding decreases over the life of that grant and, or it ends at a certain point, and at that point, you know, the city inherits the cost of those officers. And I'm just trying to get that, not, I don't need a long discussion, I just want to know, when are we on the hook for how much? And if that's incremental over a couple more years, great, what is that? And if it all happens in one fell swoop, great, what is that?
Chief, I know you sent some of this stuff out, you have it memorized by chance of what?
I have a pretty good recollection of it, I don't have it obviously at my fingertips because I wasn't planning on presenting here. Chief Roger Shire of the Pocatello Police Department. I did send all that information out to council yesterday, including the grant application, the award of $625,000 that we did receive. We received that grant, and it was, I believe, signed into effect in August of 2020. It's a three-year grant, and then the, it's actually a four-year grant, we have to retain those officers for one year after the the grant is. So we're looking at a minimum of 2024, or FY probably 25, before we have to to visit that, where we're funding them. The city match was $671,000 and change. We we received $625,000 from that CHP grant.
Okay, so we're on the hook annually until 2025 for 671?
We will have to address it probably for the FY '25 budget.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Maybe the 24, I, but I believe this is.
Double check, and if it changes, let us.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think it's going to be 24.
Okay, Heather?
Once it expires, we have to keep them on.
So last time we talked, I had talked about our benefits rates, and I said those numbers weren't firm. They are now firm, so I'd like to just briefly go over those. As indicated, we are staying with Blue Cross for fiscal year '23. We are looking at a 14.2% increase. That does, it is a one-year cost, I don't have a rate lock, this is the only benefit before you that we don't have a multi-year rate on. Health joy is now going to be covered under our Blue Cross renewal, so that expense will no longer be incurred for the city. Additionally, domestic partnerships are allowed under this plan. It's something we offered in the past, we're just reactivating that piece of the plan. Dental insurance, we are doing a carrier change this year. We've had a long-term relationship with. We've had a long-term relationship with Delta Dental, but MetLife came in very aggressive. We have a two-year rate lock, which is a negative 19%, and a 5% cap on year three. So we know our costs going out for the next couple of years, which I think benefits us in the long run.
Does that change Heather, have any benefit difference to the employee?
The benefit itself is the same. There might be slight changes in the network that is available under MetLife. For fiscal year '23, we are staying with Symetra for life insurance. They found out we were going to shop, so they came in with a very nice negative 29%. That's a two-year rate lock, so we're pretty excited about that one. We are doing a carrier change under EAP. We've had multiple carriers under EAP the last couple of years. We have a very aggressive plan for our emergency responders. I think it served them well, and we maintain, try to maintain very good networks for that. Curelink came in with some numbers that we really can't walk away from. It's a three-year rate lock of negative 11% for regular employees and negative just under 16% for emergency responders. So one note, EAP is not budgeted through salary projections. So when you look at my numbers, it is not included in those costs. It is a line item that is paid out of either HR, fire and ambulance, or police. We don't budget by person. We budget, we count the people, we times it by 12 months, and we put it in a line item. And then lastly, health joy benefit is continuing. However, those costs are now incurred under our Blue Cross rate to make things a little bit simpler for everybody.
I got, I heard, oh, and then she started pointing at Rick. And so I'm assuming Rick and then Linda?
Yeah, it was actually her, but I see nothing about vision.
Vision is not paid by the city. It's 100% employee funded.
Okay.
And we are in year two of a rate lock with VSP. We will go out to bid next year.
I have a similar question that Rick asked about the dental insurance for the EAP program. Are they comparable?
So the plan itself, we match the CBA language that we're required to honor. They have so many visits, one mandatory per year. Networks, again, will fluctuate slightly. We do try to add providers that are popular if they're not in network, and a lot of the time, not all the time, we are successful in adding those vendors.
Are there any EAP benefits for general employees outside of fire service and police?
Yes, we pay for EAP for every member of the city, and it covers their dependents. That is covered. It isn't 20 visits, I believe it's six.
Thank you.
So this is just a benefits cost summary of the benefits we just discussed that have a financial impact on this side of the city. As you can see, dental, the city's cost is going down. The cost is going down about just under 16%. Life insurance is going down 26%. Health joy is, there's no longer have that expenditure at all. And then medical is going up 18.28%. You'll notice 18.28 is higher than the 14.2. I talked to you, let me reconcile those numbers for you. Every year when we sit down and we start salary projections, employees are well-trained in how our budget process works. If they can, they let us know of any benefit changes that they know they have coming in the fall. That's so we can budget for them. Also, new positions are included, so that's eight new positions on benefits, so that's part of the percentage. And then the last piece of that is, when someone submits an intent to retire for budgeting purposes, we move their benefit rate to family. It's so that we can afford to hire whoever it is coming on at the highest benefit rate. Within those line items, if it's not spent, it usually rolls right back into reserves at the end of the fiscal year. There can be special exceptions, but they are rare. It's just something we budget so that we can afford to hire the best candidate, not just the cheapest candidate.
Okay, Rick?
Just, just one more time for reassurance. We're seeing some substantial lowering of costs, what, $86,000, almost $87,000? But we're not changing the benefits to the employee.
The benefits plans themselves are remaining almost identical. There could be slight nuances in network.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm not reducing any benefit level.
Okay.
Josh mentioned he liked pitchers, so I brought some pitchers today. Last year, when you look at fiscal year '22, this is a breakdown of the benefits. It's just by percentage to show you how those expenses play out across the 100% of the benefit cost. As you can see, last year, medical was 40. Socials, percies along the bottom, those fluctuate depending on head counts. And then, as you can see, things like fire medical savings come in at 1%. Life insurance doesn't even hit 1%. I just wanted to show you the comparison to say we are aggressively managing our benefit plans. There is an increase in medical this year. Part of that is because I have decreases everywhere else. It's not just the percentage increase that we've seen. If everything else costs less and it goes up a little, it's still a bigger piece of the pie.
Chris? Would AJ be able to give any guesstimate at all? Because as you mentioned, the last time you were before us, we had two clearly horrific health situations with police officers recently. And I'm curious, plus with, you know, COVID continues, it's not a, doesn't seem to be on the radar very much around here, but in other parts of the country, it's very much on the radar. The new strain is, is really beginning to impact. And so I'm just curious, if we saw 14% increase in health costs this year, do you have any idea, are we, are insurance companies going to recoup, for example, their COVID losses? Because their, their boards, their stakeholders are going to want to maintain their profits. So what are we, what are we projecting for, you know, when we're sitting here this time next year, for example?
So, to be clear, on-the-job injuries are not part of the medical plan. Those are paid through our workers' comp program, which is the modifier.
Entirely?
Entirely. There is no cost to an employee who is injured on the job. That is 100% covered by the city. That's time loss, everything. All their bills are covered by the city.
Okay, okay.
To ask me to project what next year looks like, I track the 16th of every month. I get our experience summary from the previous month. I have like a 10-year chart, and I mean, you should see this thing, like tracks up and down. This year is a rough year. Our renewal at 14.2 was a gift, and it's because Blue Cross is very interested in keeping the relationship, and we really appreciate that. They also know that I have no problem recommending a vendor change. The problem is, when you do a vendor change, they buy your book. And that means in year two, if you don't have a rate lock or a max, your renewal is probably going to be over 20%.
Right.
I don't know what we look like next year, honestly.
No, I just thought AJ, since he's a broker, might have.
We could talk about national trends, and he can bring those in. The problem is, Pocatello is always a little bit unique in our medical. We run into challenges that other places don't. Somehow, we just, every once in a while, you saw the year with the decrease, still one of my favorite numbers I've ever got to say with you is a negative. I don't bring in a negative this year. AJ could bring in some trends for you, but again, it's really hard to decide how they apply to us.
Of course, of course, but I mean, if the.
Conservatively, you should budget it benefits at a 15% increase each year.
I was going to say, I mean, you know, there must be a way to guesstimate. I was hoping it would be 10, but, but 15. Because I, again, in terms of playing this out over more than one siloed year, that's, that can be a big number.
Can be. Okay.
This is a total breakdown of fiscal year '22 versus fiscal year '23 of benefits and salary projections. Again, the key words there are in salary projections, not budget, so there will be slight nuances between the departments. If you go analyze my numbers and you take the entire budget book and you add everything up, please feel free. The biggest thing to understand is, I've listed all the benefits. The lighter color is 22, the darker color is 23. As you see, we've maintained or decreased in everywhere that we can. Unfortunately, the far right column, workers' comp, we're not, we're not doing a change to the modifier, so that cost is staying pretty level. Medical, of course, is going up.
Claudia? How, how will the workers' comp claims for this year affect next year? Do you have any?
Well, I can bring Ann up, and she can talk about workers' comp to her little heart's content.
Well, no, not till, no, 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 you can come up. I just mean, not till your little heart's content. I just want to know, are we going to see a significant impact from the claims from this year?
And do we sell, Heather, help, again, I just am trying to be clear with myself. Do we self-fund, so to speak, our workers' comp versus?
We are internally funded on that.
Doing it through the government or whatever? Yeah.
So for work comp, we, Ann Butler, Risk Manager, we pay 100% of their medical expenses, including time loss benefits. So all of that is covered in the Risk Liability Fund, which is why we always talk about the modifier. The more money we put in it, the more we have reserves for rainy day, right? So right now, we're funding that at 85%, okay, around $1 million, just under that. Our reserves for our total number of claims are running typically around $400,000 total, all of our claims. Our two police claims that you're referring to are running about 615 right now. Okay, that's a reserve, so that's an amount set on that claim. That doesn't mean we'll meet it. That's their best guess, okay? I do not have medical bills on those two claims right now. I don't know if those reserves are close. And truthfully, since we haven't had an injury like this since 2006, I wasn't here in 2006, so I'm guessing that the one is probably pretty high. I don't see it meeting that amount, but I don't know. So right now, reserves, because we have to be willing on our reserve amount to say, do we have the money to pay for all those claims at once if they are at 100%? Now, most of them don't, right? If my claim, my back injury, is a $3,000 claim, and it ends up only being a strain, and I go to the doctor and only have some office visits and it's 500 bucks, then they adjust the reserves. Okay, so that's our best guess at this point for those two claims.
So if it, if it comes in at 650, what does that mean we would, does that mean we would have to do something budgetarily in next year's budgeting process in order to make sure that we have adequate reserves?
I'm going to keep asking you to increase the modifier to 100%. We're running at 85. So increasing that by 15% puts an extra $200,000 in that budget each year for this year's estimate, okay? That's for this year. We need to continue to put money in there to grow that until we're all comfortable, okay?
So theoretically, at a minimum, each of, not only for '23, but for '24 and '25, we would probably be looking at a minimum of $2,000 each of those years?
Two.
200,000?
Yeah.
For each of those years?
And it's based on salaries, so it goes up a little bit as salaries go up.
Right, right.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of understand.
Process it.
Yes, thank you.
There's a lot of moving pieces in this data, so please let us know if you have questions. All right, so one of the other questions I heard from the last council meeting, what are our total costs for our CBAs? So here they are broken down. Again, this is where, if you guys bust out your calculator versus the budget, there's going to be slight discrepancies in the individual lines, but the overall budget numbers you've already discussed and will continue to discuss have the 100% precise. So for police civilians, they are part of the CBA, however, they are on the city employees' scale. The cost change to fiscal year '23 is 7.98%, and for sworn officers, with the addition of the two headcount, is 11.42, for an overall total increase of 10.4%. For the fire CBA, now, I know the ambulance percentage is off based on those splits I talked about, but your overall increase there is about 5.19% for an average of 8.32 or 1.6 million.
So what would the increase be for, so if this is, if this, you know, more than one and a half mil for '23, then roughly, can you?
So we're in year two of our contracts. Police is a four-year, fire is a three-year, and Holly has some rough estimates.
Of that, okay. And then there's some information, various information floating around out in the ethos about what we, what the city, what the county, who pays for dispatch and who pays what amount of dispatch? And I just would, I mean, I'm not asking it other than to clarify because there's all kinds of hoo-ha going on around, you know, do we pay for all of dispatch? Does the county pay for any dispatch, et cetera? Can some, can either the chief or?
I would defer that to one of the chiefs.
And again, I'm asking just so that rather than having everybody speculating and getting stirred up.
Chief Roger Shire, Pocatello Police Department. I can tell you that the fire department pays for half of the dispatch supervisor position, which is currently AJ Lauder. They pay for some medical training for the EMD program, but other than that, as far as the personnel costs, it all comes out of the Pocatello Police Department.
And out of the taxpayer?
Yes.
Paid by, so taxpayers essentially, one way or the other, are paying 100% of dispatch?
Yes. The, the equipment, however, is a different story. The equipment is, is funded by the 911 funds that are generated off the $1, now $1.25 because we are, we just became part of the grant. $1.25 from every, every cell phone or every landline that has 911 attached to it gets put into this fund where people that are designated in this area, it comes in every year to the 911 fund. And then those funds are allocated. We meet pretty regularly with Adam McKinney over at the Banda County in the Commissioner's Office in reference to those funds. And those funds include all the dispatch equipment, not only within our center, but the towers across the county that the repeaters bounce off of so that we can get clear radio receptions.
Great, thank you very much.
Hold on, Chief.
Claudia, got Claudia and then Rick.
Oh, does the, do you bill, does the police department bill the county at all for any of the dispatch?
No.
We don't, okay.
Those 911 funds, Chief, is that, those, are those funds distributed according to the geographic location of that phone or address of that phone? Or how is that money dispersed?
Yeah, and that's something that we've been in discussions with about when we encourage people when they move to this area to make sure that they change their address on their cell phone, because that's where those funds go. So if you have a student from Idaho State University whose their address is a California address or a Nevada address, then that, that dollar goes to them. We are working with Adam McKinney to try to work with the cell phone companies a little bit better to try to go off actually where they're at and where they're, where they're living, but that requires the address change on their bill.
Is that state or federal regulation?
That's, well, for, for the 911 funds in the state of Idaho, we're going off of the state, but I believe there is some federal guidelines that go with that. Adam would know more information on that.
I'm just wondering if it's similar to the census, you know, and where students were required to say they were living and therefore the money would come to that community? Is it a similar kind of, like, it went by where they were most of the year?
Yeah, that's, that's, who's paying the bills, too? If mom and dad are paying the bills, then that's going to be a problem, too. But they're, they're living here, they're getting the services here from us, but mom and dad are paying the bills in another state.
So is that determined by the area code? Or is there an address connected?
It's determined, the last time we asked that question, because we asked that question in our, in our 911 committee meeting, and it was determined off the address of the bill, not the, not the area code. Because you can port your number over, and now you can keep your number, but it's, it's going off of the address of the bill is what we were told.
So in many cases, if, like you say, if parents are paying their child's bill, then that money's not coming to us.
Correct. And that's the way it is in every community, Boise State, you know, especially college towns. So, you know, and we, we're just over $1 million a year that go to that fund, last time we checked. But with us growing and people moving to Pocatello, that, that number's going to go up. More businesses come in and have 911 lines, that number will go up. And adding that 25 cents on, that's going to, over time, really have a huge impact.
You keep saying 911 lines. I thought that was automatic. Is this an opt-in that you can do with or without 911?
No, it's, it's part of your cell phone. When, when you see a cell phone bill come in and it says fees, that's, that's part of those fees.
Okay.
So it's a dollar, now it's $1.25. So we just, we just recently became. So we just, we just recently became part of the IPSCC grant, which is part of, we were, we were one of the only areas that did not participate in that. We changed that about six months ago.
I was wondering about family plans.
Every, every line, every line is attached that fee.
So it's a bill goes to someone in Pocatello, but they have a family member in Utah and a family member in Blackfoot or whatever. It still would come here?
The address of it, yes. The address of the bill, yes.
Okay.
And I will, I will, I will double-check on that because I know we were investigating that, and that was the information that we were told, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And yes, it is kind of a mess because of these.
Part of the CBA costs that isn't addressed in salary projections is medical and VBA for fire, CBA, and fire management. Those are not a city benefit. They are not budgeted through salary projections. They are a line item. We take the number of people at their enrollment, and we multiply it out and place it in the line. So these costs here would have to be tied into your CBA totals to get actual costs for the CBA piece.
So where are those VBA costs?
Right here.
So, okay, and the fact that it's in a pink box, does that mean it was, it's a decrease?
No, it means it's the total.
Okay, okay, I just didn't know. Okay. So basically, if we add this to the prior page of totals for CBAs, then we get the actual total for the department, so to speak.
Yep. So these are the totals for both fire and police management. As you might recall from the last time I was here during budgeting, we did adopt, are hoping to adopt, a new pay scale for fire management, which rolls longevity into part of their base and is no longer a separate ad pay. And then police management, we are looking to mimic what we're doing with the CBA scale, which is the addition of the step and the 3% increase to the table. That brings your overall management total to $191,000 increase. Now, talking about the complete salary projection file, this is your total costs for every person that, that's, now I'm saying person, not FTE. I don't say that very often. We budget by person, because if you're half an FTE, we still have to budget for you fully as a person, all benefits, not just half. So the increase to the salary projection file for fiscal year '23 over the fiscal year '22 file is 8.06% or 4.15 million. That includes CBA costs, that includes management costs, and that includes general employee costs, all benefits, all wages.
So is this exclusive to tax funds?
No, this is the entire, this is the entire file.
One could say the complete file.
One could say. Another item that was discussed at the last meeting that I was here was, we heard a lot of support from council to bring our year-round variable hour, who have a full-time equivalent to the full-time scale. When you're looking at this chart or the nice paper in front of you, that's going to be your '04 lines. So the increased cost of that is 17.58% to '03 and '04 lines, or an increase of 121,000. These numbers are built into the projections, and they're included in that number you just saw on the previous slide. They are also in the budget information Anne's been providing to you for the last couple of weeks. Anyone who is a year-round variable, a transit driver is an example, everyone's being placed at a step one. We talked about staggering. The raises are very substantial. Holly mentioned numbers last time. So we placed everyone at a step one for this first year.
Questions, Council? When we go back to the page you had, $4,153,940, that is the total increase we're doing, and it's going to be divided?
It'll be split between all of the funds we have at the city, both tax, enterprise, and outside revenue.
Okay, so, but it's still going to be ahead of this size overall, so?
It's an investment on our employees who provide our services, yes.
Very soon.
I have to say that I had somebody tell me this week that their escrow account is going up by 1,200 a month because they're getting hit by the increase in insurance, big time, because of the escalating appraisals and replacements. And they're getting hit in taxes, and they figure they're going up about 600 a month in each one of those. And they're not happy campers, needless to say.
So then, just as a gross ballpark, since this year's budget proposal or budget is presented by the mayor was essentially a 3%, well, 4% increase, but I'm going to say 3% to be conservative. So basically, how erroneous would I be in thinking that if for '24 and '25, and this question maybe will get answered, if we added 3% for '24 to this $4 million, and then we added 3% for '25 to this, to that total, to the 4 million plus 3%, would that even be a ballpark way of trying to figure out what this salary situation might look like in two years?
Do you want to address those numbers, Holly?
Yeah, absolutely. So I did do some, some rough estimates. And keep in mind, you had already hit the nail right on the head that we don't know where benefits land, you know? And so I kept the benefits rates exactly the same as where they're at, so please keep that in mind. If we're looking at the fire and ambulance, we are locked into a contract, so we were able to provide a good guess there. The total cost of the fire union, wow, with ambulance and the fire funds would be an increase of 194,976,48, about 195. If we add the fire management to that, it would be an increase of 211.9, or 211. Let's just do 212.
212,000?
Yep, 212,000.
Say decimals points.
And that would be an increase for '24?
That's for '24. I could only calculate through '24 because that's all their CBA is done through.
Right.
Okay?
Sure, thank you, yes, I keep.
There's a lot of moving pieces when we pull the unions in because it's kind of a separate set of rules. We have to apply to the ones you give me.
Right. If we're looking at police for next year, because they also have the CBA, and so there's included that, the increase of the 3.5% that's already been agreed on, same with the fire. We would be looking at, between police civilians and sworn officers, an increase of 501,000. Police management would be another 41,000 on top of that.
So 542?
Yeah, 544 is what I have, and some change.
544, okay.
Now, for general employees, I did not put a market adjustment on the scale at all. But I did give everybody a step increase.
But, so this, so this 544 would be 424?
Yes, that is correct.
And that, there, the police CBA goes out another year?
Yep, they've got through 25. And so if we're looking at total combined with civilians, officers, and police management for 25, it would be an increase of 550,000.
So over '24 and '25, there would be an increase of more than a million?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, could you give me the 25 number again?
550,000 total.
Thank you.
Yes. Now, for the general scale, I just did the step increase. We just never know what's going to happen market-wise. And once again, this is the exact same benefit cost. And so for all of the general employees, the increase to fiscal year '24 from '23 would be 617,000? From, to move to fiscal year '25, that increase for the general scale would be an additional 968,000. Looking at that, we had several people get to that step number six, which is our retention step. The following year for fiscal year '26, it would be an increase of 697,000. And the best way I can describe that discrepancy is that step movement between the step six and step seven. That's as far as I've projected.
So for general employees with a step only, keeping benefits the same, over the next two years, we would be talking about something close to a million and a half on top of police on top of fire?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. So at some point, I'm going to be really interested in getting some kind of revenue projections. And I understand that, you know, revenue is movable, and we don't know what the legislature was, would, will do. But I think to make a responsible decision this year, since 1% is coming from non-renewable funds, I think we need to play this out and, and, you know, create a guesstimate. Because otherwise, we could end up in a situation where we're having to balance the budget by letting employees go. And that's not any place where, and that's not because employees aren't important. It's because salaries and benefits is, I mean, that's what eats up, as you can see from Heather's picture, that's what eats up the budget.
Well, the budget, I don't know the exact numbers this year. It's usually around just above 130 million.
Right, or the tax-esque budget, I guess I should be more specific.
Because there is a difference, because not all of employees are funded through taxes. They're funded through services.
But, but enterprise funds also hit taxpayers.
They do, but they're also, it's a service that they need to function.
I understand, but it, you know.
I mean, to own a home, you have to have water.
Well, I know, I understand that. You also have to have, you know, health insurance if you can possibly, if you're lucky enough to be able to afford it. But that doesn't mean that because you have to have it, that the financial impact to a household is negligible. It just means you have no choice, unless you're going to carry water from your neighbor.
Okay, other questions for these two? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Holly. Appreciate it. That was fast work.
There's been a lot of work.
Okay, Council? Anne, I don't know where, do you want to start with this?
I think last time you just started with the memo and went to the revenue, on to the revenue versus expenditure, and last with the solution worksheet.
Okay, and these numbers that we discussed last time. And so the taxes with the 3% increase is 899,808. They, that hasn't changed. The 1% foregone for O&amp;M is 325,642. And then with the additional revenues, Council, you've, these revenues are projected from AIC. And I think AIC really did these. I know we had help with the county, and we had help with the Idaho State Tax Commission and stuff, but.
Are we doing this page, Anne?
No.
The memo.
He's just running down the memo.
I'm just running down the memo for you.
Just to remind everybody what's actually included in this draft budget.
And so then, we've got 940,497 of state revenue sharing, 38,330 on liquor sales. And we have reduced the franchise fees. We've, we definitely have reduced the cable fee. And then our highway distribution per AIC's estimates are 435,591. And then you had the others presented on May 26 and stuff. Our expenditures, we just went over the 14.2% increase in Blue Cross. Salary changes, we've just gone over that with you as well. New employee requests, we've discussed. And new fuel estimates are included now in, in this, this budget. An up to 3% O&amp;M increase per department. I mean, you can, you can read this, the use of reserves in Fund 78. Additional expenditures per the seven, last week's tax solution worksheet is all included in this as well. The tax solution worksheet is this one, right here. Says tax fund solution worksheet on the top of it. We've included in this budget here, things from the ranked thing. The number 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 have been included. Payment management of $500,000. Bannock Highway and South Valley Signal. We need some clarification on this one, Council. The, it was very clear, the 114,000 of street reserves. It was semi-clear, and we want to make sure it's very clear, the 635,653 of the one-time money from the state funds to be used for that, that Bannock-South Valley Connecture signal. I thought it was clear, Anne thought it was not, so we just want to clarify the.
Where is that?
The, that's on the.
On the memo?
On the memo. But it's also right here, it's the yellow part down on the bottom of this. Bannock Highway, South Valley, 635.
We just wanted to make sure it was crystal clear to everyone that we were also using those one-time reserves out of to fund the additional 635.
I thought it was.
Okay, again, we just, we had this discussion afterwards, and we just wanted to make sure everybody completely understood now.
Would you want a motion in order to make sure it's a lockdown?
Sure, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor? Okay.
I would move that we approve the $635,653 from one-time State of Idaho funds and reserves for the Bannock Highway-South Valley Signal project, as was previously discussed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lurick to be crystal clear on the $635,653 one-time State of Idaho funds payment to the Street Department. Connie, can you call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was crystal clear then. And then we approved the $207,000 from, for the building and planning software. We approved $1.8 million, or the full purchase of the fire tower truck. And then number five, the driving simulator at $300,000. If you look at your tax fund solution worksheet, those have all been included here with the, where those funds are coming from on that. Those were all included. A couple of things that were not. And in fact, we do not need a motion. Like last week, we don't need a motion if you do not want to include these. But a few things, there were talked about, building vehicle. There was a desire to not have that done, so we didn't have a motion. Overtime request was not discussed. I thought we discussed the visitor bureau increase a little bit, but we needed to probably get some clarification on that. And then let me go to the other page here. And then the other big one was the modifier. We had, I think, just a very minimal discussion there. After the presentation we've had, I think we ought to add to our problem by adding the modifier in at 5%.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham to add a 5% modifier. That is $91,647. What, do you have a? I just said increase the problem, I didn't solve it.
I can solve it.
We can solve that. She can solve that problem. Okay, so we have a motion to increase the modifier 5%. Okay, so we have a motion to increase the modifier 5%. Connie, could you call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So counsel, this is in front of you. As you look at this sheet, you can see that Anne has removed the 3% forgone as it was voted on and to remove, if you, you can see here, 3% forgone does not, or it does not add, that has been removed. It's in pink. If you go down to the bottom, the capital fund, you can see it is zeroed out, and so that is not in there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just want to talk about this for a minute. I'm not going to make a motion. If we removed the 1% forgone for O and M, could our departments individually, the way that is split, could they manage their city budgets? Is that possible and keep the city running? I'm trying to run through and add up all the O and M things, and I, there's too many numbers to do in my head real quick. I'm just wondering if you've done any calculation on that, Anne?
I have not.
Well, I'm wondering if we can, rather than asking departments to belt tighten again, because we've asked them, and I specifically have asked them to do that for the last two years, and my sense is, apart from adding people, you know, but operationally, they've tightened a lot, at least most departments. But I wonder if we can cut new asks enough to, if we can find enough to get rid of that additional 1%. I'm just not comfortable in the current climate and more and more verbiage about a potential recession. I am just not comfortable, I'm not comfortable with 3%, but I'm sure as heck not comfortable with 4%.
Could you define, just for clarification for the departments, what you're considering new asks?
Well, when they're asking for new people, or they're asking for, I don't know, I mean, the driver simulator program that is a new something, and none of those, I'm not coming from a place where I think those were inappropriate asks, or, you know, that they're not valuable.
No, I'm just, one clarification, so we know exactly what you were considering.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the simulator isn't necessarily a new ask, it's a one-time purchase from reserves, so that doesn't really.
Right, right, bad example, bad example, but, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and then I've got Josh, and then Rick.
Number one, I think a lot of, I think this year especially, per Rick's recommendation at the beginning of this, end of our last meeting, we were able to appropriately use excess reserves in ways that I think are going to really help the city, and I think was done so with the consideration of the tax, you know, the tax difficulty that citizens are facing. But the second thing I want to add, and I think is important, is AIC regularly puts a presentation on the tax history of Idaho, because that 3% limit is built in by the State of Idaho that we have to follow. And AIC estimates that cities are operating on a budget that are roughly at the equivalent of what they would have been at a 1990s population. The State of Idaho has put the kind of constraints that require cities to run on a skeleton crew, and so when we're talking about this 3%, it already is at just the barest of minimums, and I think that our staff has done an excellent job. You know, I understand Rick's sentiment and kind of looking at that. I think with the salary projection increases this year, though, I think that the 1% of capital, or of forgone for O and M, that adds to the base, is a necessary part of that equation. And I think that, especially given the kind of quality and the services that we offer, it's essential that we offer them at the fullest capacity to the expectations of the city.
Rick?
Well, you know, I hate to even bring this up, because I know we're facing 9.3% inflation across this country right now. Materials and doing, the cost of doing business is up, and there's no way around that. And whether we can maintain our streets, whether we can maintain the fuel reserves for our police and fire and our various equipment we have throughout the city, that's a concern. So I guess what I'm really asking is, if we take the 1% forgone out, could we ask our departments to go back to a 2% O and M? Would that cover that 1% forgone? And I don't know where the answer is to that. It's a tough situation we're in, and I understand every one of us are taxpayers. We're, you know, we have that problem that we share with every other resident of this city, and it hurts. I mean, my property taxes went up 45% this year. Now, that's just, doesn't surprise me. I don't want the guy down the street, two doors, sold his house for. So, yeah, it's going to cost, we're going to have to, we're going to have to move our budgets around a little bit to make it work, but I'm just wondering if there's any way. I also, in the other new capacity that I have, I've had discussions with several legislators, and this forgone issue is going to be back on the table this year. And I, I'm concerned about that, and further restrictions and less revenue sharing from the state down the road. I think we're safe for '23 because of potential implementation dates, but it's back on the table when they're discussing a reactivation of House Bill 741 in a new light. And I'm just concerned about it. I guess I'd like an answer to that question, if there's, and I know it's not going to be a simple answer, Anne, so I don't expect you to cough that up, but.
I guess my simple answer would be, last year's motion was to prepare the budget, I believe you made the motion, sir, to have the mayor pull together the department heads and cut $671,000. And we made that happen. If that's what your motion is this year, that's what we would have to do.
But is it functional? And I guess when I turn and I look at staff and say, can you operate on 2% O and M? I don't want to, I don't want to cripple the services we're delivering to our citizens. But can we do it by just squeezing the penny just a little harder?
Well, we've been operating on a 0% increase for O and M, so 2% is better than nothing. Is it ideal? Absolutely not. Is it going to hurt some departments more than others? Absolutely it will. Can we do it? We can, we can do anything that you tell us to do.
Good answer.
Okay, we got Linda, and then Claudia, and then Chris.
And, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but I think, given the, I mean, I agree with what Josh said, I think you put it well, and given the costs, you know, everything costs more, and I just don't see that we can make that cut and not have it severely impact service level. And I am not in favor of that at all. The other part that I really do not want to consider is, you know, we have put positions in here, new positions, and we had a majority of us agree to those. I know that's not a final decision, but I think those positions are absolutely necessary, the ones, you know, that we have approved, and there were justifications for those. So in order to try to find a place to cut, I just, I don't feel that that's a place we can cut. If there's something else we could look at, that's fine, but I feel strongly about keeping the positions that we've discussed in here. And I just don't know that we can ask departments to operate on so much less and still, you know, try to provide the same level of service. I just don't see it as possible.
Okay, Claudia?
So, I'm, based on what Rick was just talking about, about how forgone is going to be on the table, about how they're talking about less sharing, state revenue sharing and all of these things, I'm just curious, how do we expect this to work next year, when you're, when we project out? I mean, the numbers that Holly gave us don't even include increases in benefits, and we know, we cannot be naive enough to think that those costs of benefit will not go up, even if they go up 5%, which it's going to be more, but even if it's just 5%. We're talking about taking 4% this year, if we can, take 4% next year, and then what? And then what? I mean, at some point, we're going to have to make, I mean, I just don't, this is, to me, is a freight train, and it's like barreling towards a rock wall. I just don't understand, I think we're pretending that we can somehow figure it out. We have to start having a real conversation about real reduction. I think by and large, departments are operating on a shoestring operational budget. We've seen that, we've seen that. I think we start, need to start being honest, and while it's going to be ugly and, and people are going to get upset, we, it is our responsibility to start talking about reductions. Where can reductions happen? We can't have everything, we can't. Nobody, nobody in this room has ever gotten everything they've ever wanted out of life, nobody. And I think to pretend that we can continue to do this is dishonest and unrealistic, and at some point, this is going to come to a head. This is going to come to a head, and we can either start addressing it now, or we can wait until there is absolutely no way, no way to make this budget happen with what we know is going to be coming down the line with regards to wages and benefits and the CBAs. I guarantee you that when we renegotiate the CBA with fire next year, they're not going to tell us, you know what, we'll take less. That's not going to happen. So you have to think about, that's going to be more. It's, I just think that we're pretending, we're pretending that we can sustain this, and I don't see that happening. If one of you has an idea of how we can sustain this going forward, I wish you would tell me, because I stay up at night thinking about how this is going to play out.
Chris, and then Josh.
So, I was trying to do these numbers while we were making motions and et cetera, so I don't, I think they're correct, but, so I added without benefits costs that Holly gave us. And I added, so I added those up, and then I used the tax revenue at 4% and the additional revenue that's in the memo. And that's with no other, no other tax-supported costs, and not even realistically what people will cost us. I added that up, and then I did the same thing with the revenues. Now, I kept them the same, because I'm trying to ballpark quickly here, and basically, when I did that math, we, in '24, we would have a million and a half dollars, tax dollars, to cover every other tax-supported cost in the entire city, and that's it. That's it. And, and I haven't had time to, like, think through this and say, okay, typically, you know, how much over personnel, you know, over two or three years? I haven't had a chance to do any of that, but a million and a half dollars in a city budget and in city expenses is like a sneeze. And so I'm really, really concerned that, that we're going to hit a crunch point. And I guess what I would like to know, and I think I can answer this, so Anne, you'll have to, hopefully you can tell me if I'm correct. So as I looked at the tax fund solution worksheet, everything up to the options for removal appears to be funded by something other than a new add-on tax ask.
The ones, correct, the ones that you approved, the vote that you all voted to address.
They're all coming out of reserves, right.
They're all coming out of reserves, correct.
Right. Now, am I correct? I mean, I think I am, because your language is extremely clear, but I'm trying to also be clear for the public. In the options for removal section, it clearly says this would reduce the tax ask.
In that section, correct.
And so, to me, if we're going to talk about reducing the tax ask, really, these are our options, because the other things, you know, aren't included, you know, and these become our options for reducing the budget. Is that a reasonable way of thinking?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, except for, most of these things are operating expenses.
They are the, the O and M that we were talking about.
Right, right. Most of these things are the operating budget.
Well, I mean, there are, well.
I didn't say everything, I just said most.
No, right, right, but there are two big-ticket items, I mean, none of these are particularly.
But those are covered.
None of these are particularly big-ticket items is part of the problem, because even if we are able to make reductions.
Because those, the ones that you're looking at.
Right. Right, right.
So again, I mean, then we're talking about reducing the operating budgets of departments who are already.
Well, not if they're asking for an increase. If they're asking in here, which some of them are, for an increase, again, not that it's not justified, et cetera, et cetera, but if they're asking for an increase, then we're not reducing them from last year by not putting the increase in. I mean, I get it, I get it.
But the increases won't.
Yeah, the ask isn't, it's, you're not reducing our ask, you're reducing our capability to buy, because.
Right.
A loaf of bread that cost me a dollar last year is costing me a dollar thirty this year.
No, I under, trust me, I went to the grocery store with my fantastic rebate from the state of 120 bucks, and, you know, bought some oranges, a couple half gallons of milk, and some fruit.
And maybe a potato.
And a loaf of bread, and it was gone, so, yeah, so I.
I'm just concerned, because I kind of think I know where you're going, and we saw this last year, when we asked departments to come in with a, with a, and the amount that they were able to reduce.
I know, it's midfield.
Was minimal. I mean, some of the departments were able to reduce, like, $1,000.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's nothing. That's not going to make a dent in what my concern is, which is next year and the year before.
Right.
Again, we have to stop pretending.
Right.
That we can keep going at this rate. We have to start having the real conversations about how we can reduce spending.
And forgone is not a sustainable fund. I mean, forgone exists only if you don't use it, and, you know, we're using 1% of that this year, and if we have to use, and de facto, when you wash the budget out, de facto, we are using one-time funds to support a budget that includes personnel costs that must continue. And so, de facto, we are using one-time funds to support ongoing expenditures, and there's no financial person on the planet who would say that's a good idea.
Okay, so Josh, and then, and then I'll comment on that, because the 1% is not personnel, that's O and M.
No, I understand that.
And we removed the 3% of capital, so none of the forgone is actually going to personnel.
No, but what I'm saying is, in order to float and balance this entire budget. We have to use 1% of funds that, of forgone.
Sure, but, but. Don't use forgone and replace it with cuts.
Right, so it's not.
No, I get that.
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying in, this budget cannot balance without using one-time funds. And if it can't balance without using one-time funds, and we can't cut, we have nothing of significance, even if we want to stranglehold our departments, we have nothing of significance that we can cut, then that means that this is not a sustainable, it's not a sustainable budget.
I just want to just clarify one thing, the forgone for oper, well, I have a question, but I want to clarify this with you first. So that $325,000 is going to get added to our budget next year, when we calculate our 3%, is that going to be included in that number?
Yes.
Yes, it adds to the base.
I think this is a critical delineation between forgone. I think this is a critical delineation between forgone and one-time reserve funds, grant funds, any other funds. That $3 million we've chose not to take in the past is the choice not to take taxes from the citizens when we could've taken the full 3%. This year, to take that forgone, says, we had that inflation come up faster than we expected, we wanna take that money and add it then, and it does actually compound in future years, as Mayor just said, it adds into the budget this year, and then we get to take another 3% with that new number included next year.
Get to take another 3%? We get to take? Wow.
That's what it's for.
We should've been taking 3% all along.
That's the point.
But what you guys are doing is you're calling into question the integrity of all the councils.
No, we're not.
Yes, you are.
No, we're not.
You're saying they were stupid to put money aside.
Hold on, hold on, stop. We don't need to yell.
You're saying they were stupid.
We don't need to yell.
But they weren't. They had a discipline when it came to financial governance, and they said, we will not take the full amount.
I, I...
And that's how the forgone was established.
I did not hear anybody say former councils were stupid.
We should have, is to say they were, they were not smart enough.
That is not even close to, that is not, no, no, that's not, and that's, that's ridiculous.
I, I heard the comment.
Take offense to that. That was a very, very...
The comment was made, sir.
So let, let's let Josh finish his statement, and stop yelling back and forth. There's no reason for that.
Well, nobody's yelling, but there was a comment made.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm not yelling. You wanna block him?
Roger was yelling at the top of his lungs.
Well, don't talk to me about Roger.
So don't say nobody was yelling.
Because I've been a part of those councils, and I know the discipline they used to produce the forgone that you wanna reduce.
As, as was I. Sitting in this seat for part of those.
You have wasted most of the time...
That is not true.
In terms of that, that was established over years.
Oh, that is absolutely not true.
That was established over years.
Okay. We're gonna end that right now. Josh, it's up to you to, to go ahead and finish your comments, and this is ridiculous.
The other, the other thing I'll add, then, is the discipline to not increase spending in years when inflation is at 0 or 1% is a different task than asking a budget when we're dealing with 9% inflation. And so I'm not saying that it was a mistake not to take that monies of the past, but I'm saying that that monies is available now for a time of crisis when the city needs it in order to continue to operate. Because when we talk about reductions, I wanna be very clear what we talk about. When you talk about reductions, you talk about emergency response time of police officers during times of crisis. You talk about the amount of time from three minutes to four minutes that a fire department gets to your house when it's burning to the ground. You talk about the amount of time that it takes for a permitter to be able to get the license necessary to build a new house and increase economic development in the area. You talk about the time that it takes to fill potholes while citizens' cars are falling into dilapidation, and shocks and tires and gas prices are all increasing for citizens. You're talking about the efficacy of our wastewater processing plant that is the, a critical function of the city. Those are the reductions that sometime, that maybe one day we do have to say, because the forgone disappears, and in 9%, we'd have to say, yes, we have to decrease that. But right now, when you look at those costs...
I'm the one that will decide that. No, he's not yelling. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. When we look at those costs, and the cost to citizens, decreasing that budget and making reductions has direct and tangible impacts on the livelihood of the people that we are tasked to protect.
Answer.
Okay. Linda had something, and then Claudia.
I just wanna point out, too, that during this process, everyone up here has made motions of things to add into this budget. So if we are now to the point where we're talking about this budget is not sustainable, and this budget is dishonest, and all of these other things, and that the only way to fix that is to cut, then I don't understand why everyone up here was suggesting adding things to this budget. We should not have been doing that if, if this is not sustainable and this is dishonest. I object to the idea that we, I mean, we're up here working hard, making difficult decisions and difficult choices, and there is absolutely nothing dishonest about any of that.
Okay, Claudia?
Well, to Josh's comment, our budget increased significantly even during those years when inflation was 0 or 1%. Even though inflation was 0 or 1%, this city still managed to increase its budget, and not by $100,000, but by significant amounts of money. And all that came from the taxpayers, all of it. Then we add insult to injury by raising fees for the services that they, that, that people have to get. We raise, we raise what it costs to get water, we raise what it costs to get everything. So all we're doing is just bleeding the people who live in this town. It's not a hun, it's not because we don't wanna protect them. And I think that that is really, that's a, that's a, that's a really nice way of making everybody think that any cuts would, would mean that their house is gonna burn down, or that police are not gonna respond when they have an, an emergency. That's not what we're talking about. We're actually not talking about reducing anything, if you really wanna get back down to it. We have had not one discussion about reducing anything. Nothing. All we talk about is how we can't do anything less than what we're doing now. And back to my last week's comment, this 4%, what's the 4% gonna be next year? I'd like a number. What's the 4% gonna look like next year? Because clearly, there's intention already of taking that 4%. So I'd like to know what that 4% number's gonna be next year. But here's the thing, last week I said that this proposed budget, and yes, everybody made suggestions, let's put this in, let's put that in, because that way we can see exactly where all of our wants, needs, and desires are gonna lead us, which is where we are today. Today, we're supposed to start figuring out, I'm not gonna get what I want. But I said last week that the people, this budget is only to keep the lights on in this town. What, what tangible, tangible benefit to the families in this community? Is it improving our parks? Nope. Is it fixing the slide at Ross Park? Nope. It's just to keep water purified and to keep police and fire, that's it. That's all we're doing. That's the bare necessities. That's the bare essentials. And we're gonna take 4% this year and 4% next year, and they're still gonna just be the bare essentials. I just don't understand how that's that difficult a concept to grasp. And to get, to take 3% is insulting and offensive to me.
Chris?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out, which Claudia already has, that we were adding things in, because that was the process at that point, and now we're at Budget Solution. And so, you know, there were a lot of things I would love to see in this budget that I know couldn't, I mean, weren't even gonna be able to fly, and so I didn't make those suggestions. But, but the whole point of the discussion last time was to say, what would we like to see in this budget? What would we not like to see? And so, of course, we were all advocating, staff was advocating, et cetera. And, and now we're at the solution point, so, so I, I shouldn't, don't think that should be mysterious. I would like to know exactly what the, well, again, everything is an estimate at this point, right? So I would like to know, so we add the 1%, so we have a 4% tax ask budget for '23. I would like to know how many dollars that then enables us to, how many additional dollars that then enables us to request for '24? Does that, am I asking that in a way that makes sense to everybody?
So I, I think that, I can understand what you're asking. It's a, it's a difficult ask, and the reason it's a difficult ask is because valuations and everything like that changes, and goes up and down and all of that stuff. And so, and so it's, it's difficult, but, but your 3% is right around 976. I mean, you look at this, 939, that's what, that's what the 3% is now. It's, it's gonna be close to that, 939, is what that is. But I wanna point out, but I would, I would, I would like to point out, we're arguing here about something. This budget, as proposed right now, as you, Council, have set it, is balanced, with the exception of the $91,000 Councilman Bray added into the budget.
How is it balanced when we say we've got a $312,000 problem?
It's not a problem. That's a problem.
That's a to the good. It does not have a minus in front of it.
Positive, yeah.
Well, it's just...
So we're yelling and arguing about something that is, it's a non-issue.
But that's with the 1%.
Could I go back to my question, which I, I didn't under, I guess, maybe I got the answer and didn't understand it? So, so basically, if, if, if I add 900 and whatever it is...
976.
Onto what this...
Years basis.
This year's basis, this budget, and then take 3% of that, then I, that will get me to roughly, and I can't talk and do that math at the same time, but I'm really curious to know, you know, how much financial, you know, power, firepower are we actually accumulating by even adding 1%?
So...
So, Roger, can you...
The 1% you're, you would be adding is a 325. That would be added to the base. But that's 1% added to the base next year, if that's what you're looking at. Your 3% over and above that next year, and it, this is, it's a ridiculous request, because it's so hypothetical, but the numbers, if we were using these numbers right here, in a hypothetical way, you're looking at about 976. $976,000.
So next...
$976,000 would be the 3% over...
Doesn't include new construction.
Does not include new construction and stuff like...
And it doesn't include one, another 1%.
It wouldn't include, it doesn't include the 1%, yeah, it's, that's, you're asking for a number? The number's about roughly 976.
All right, so we're leveraging...
Now, right here, you're gonna come and say, you said 976, and that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying hypothetically...
Right, no, I get it.
You're pulling numbers out of the sky. You're pulling a number out of the sky, too.
Okay, whatever, whatever. But, but roughly, we're leveraging, by adding 1% this year, we're leveraging somewhere approaching a million dollars next year.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
So what are the million dollars that were this year?
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
Okay, and then I've got Rick, and then Linda.
Well, you know, I, you try and project future years' budgets. The problem is, we can't forecast revenue.
Right.
That's the big issue, to me. I mean, we can forecast a budget of what it's gonna, what, what we're doing within this city, and probably come pretty close, but we have no clue what revenues are gonna be, and what the problem is gonna be. And I, I don't know why we're trying to solve next year's problem and the year after that's problem, when we can't forecast half of the budget. It isn't in there.
This is why. It's our financial policy to do that.
But, but that may have been a flawed policy.
Well, but it's still the policy.
It's a resolution that we don't have to follow.
It's a flawed, flawed policy.
Because if we follow it, then we...
Let me finish my statement. Is there, and I don't know whether you can answer this or not, Anne, at the last meeting, we took some projects and moved, and took the money from reserves to pay for those. We had 4-point-something million dollars to begin with. I can't find where the balance of that is, where we're at at this point.
For the, if you spent that money...
What's left with those things out? Yeah, what's left? And I guess what I'm ultimately getting at is, are there things included in the tax ask that could be paid for out of the, some of the balance of those reserve funds that would allow us to drop that 1% forgone, O and M?
There is honestly very little capital purchasing in the general fund, because I did ask that, so that maybe we could pay for that with the one-time 3% forgone for capital, and everybody came back with, we don't put capital requests in, because it bumps our increases so much. So there's very little capital that we could expend with that. Where you have now, if, if we were to continue the way that you discussed last week, in the general fund, you had a beginning balance of 4.16 million, and you agreed to do the 207 for the computer purchase. And again, on the tax fund sheet, you'll notice you did the fire truck for the 1.84, or the, the chief had given us, and so that gives you an ending balance of excess revenue in the general fund. This is not including the 25% we hold back for operating as required by our policy, ends you with a 2.1 excess reserve.
So are there projects proposed that could, we could use a little more of that money and move them out of the tax ask? Do, I mean, like Tom's 300 for the driver simulator, does that qualify?
That is coming out of street reserves.
Street reserves, okay.
Uh-huh. Street department's beginning balance was 4.2, after taking out the additional $500,000 for pavement management. The additional ask, besides the one-time state funding money, which will still have to come out of this balance I'm gonna give you, the $500,000 for the two new trucks, the one new sweeper at 350, your ending balance for street reserves is 2.8, minus the 600 that you just approved for the one-time state money that's in there.
And that still meets his 25% requirement?
This is above his 25%.
Above that.
We have taken out, what we're talking about is excess reserve past the 25% we're required to hold on to to operate for three months, should something happen for our policy.
Okay. Linda?
Thank you.
Trying to remember. I had a comment that goes back to something that was said earlier, but I just wanted to clarify, I think it was something along the lines of, you know, that our, that our budget has increased every year, and that all of that, or all of those increases are taxes, and bleeding the taxpayers. And a lot of our budget is not taxpayer money. There's all sorts of things. There's grant money, there's state revenue sharing, there's, you know, lots of different things. There's fees in here. So budgets can go up, and it's not 100% tax increases. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Chris, and then Roger.
So where, I'm sure it's in here. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
It's hard for me to read when my eyes are crossing and my brain is doing cartwheels.
What are you looking for?
Where in here were the, are the, and I believe the answer is no, but are the line locators or whatever utility, are those included in this budget?
Yes.
So...
It'll be on the personnel thing, Heather.
So it's wrapped, so, so what...
They're on page three.
Page three.
Uh-huh. Ah, thank you.
Page three.
All right. And...
And then there's the zookeeper.
Right. And, so the total, and I have to look at my other sheet, the 1% is 325, so 326, roughly. So if we remove the utility locators, I understand that's enterprise funds, but, but one of the way we, ways that we can theoretically acknowledge taxpayer duress is by trying to keep fees down, by not increasing the draw on the, on the enterprise funds. I mean, is that a reasonable way to think?
It's 50, it would be 52,000 out of tax, and then the additional would come out of ratepayers, correct? At this point, you did make a motion to include it, that passed, so somebody on the...
Right.
Winning side would have to make a motion to undo it, yes.
So, so the amount that would come out of the tax ask would be...
It's the 25, 676, 676 times 2.
Because one of them is coming out of...
The, the three departments are splitting the costs.
Right.
And, street department is one of those, and street is funded partially by tax.
And so, when you, when you cut, unless we make a conscious decision to cut fees, there is no...
It doesn't make any difference.
There's no contribution back to the fee payers.
Right, right. No, it would have to be, we would have to say, you know, since we're not adding in, we're not gonna ask this 26, so hopefully we then don't have to increase the fees. But the, but the 25, 676 for locator number two is a tax ask, direct. But the, but the 25, 676 for locator number two is a tax ask directly? The 25, 676 for utility locator number two?
Because, yeah, we're asking for two of them.
Right, and one of them is enterprise.
They're all paid.
They're all free getting paid.
Paid out.
All two, all, both of them are being paid by three departments.
Okay, so then why is the tax ask reduction 25?
Because the street department is paying 34% of each of those positions.
Okay, and the street department funds are not enterprise, they're tax ask?
Partially taxed, correct.
All right, so the total reduction, if they disappeared, would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 25,000?
52.
52,000?
Correct.
Okay, I make a motion, well, I'm not ready to do that yet.
You have to be one of the.
We already had a vote.
We had a vote on that, and to remove that now would have to be, Jared, help me if I'm wrong, would have to be one of the people that supported the motion at the time, is that correct?
No.
Unless there's intervening information that changes the decision, because it hasn't been a full meeting. Typically, when you have a motion that passes, you couldn't have a secondary motion that tries to undo that motion unless it's by somebody who was on the prevailing side of the issue.
But that motion was only to put it in so that we could see what it looked like.
Right.
We didn't say, this is exactly what we're going to do.
Sure.
Okay, so then.
Part of the budget bill.
And, and so we, so why does it have to be somebody on the prevailing side? Because we specifically said we can change this.
Right.
When the next time it's in front of us, right? And nobody said, yeah, but only.
That's, that's right, so.
If part of your motion is based on further information that was received, otherwise you just get a situation where you could have competing motions till the end of the term.
But Jared, to their, to their point though, would this be a competing motion because it was with the intent to put it in so that we would see what it would look like in the budget bill?
Yeah, so if the motion is, I agreed to put it in because of this, but based on this, I'm now motioning to take it out, and I think anybody could make that motion.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But there would be, there would still need to be some citation to some intervening information, otherwise you just have competing motions.
Right, well, the intervening.
Well, I think, I think it has to do with the point that Rick has suggested we look to find the 1% forgone as diminishing out of this budget. And so in order to curtail that 1% forgone, the ask now is, how do we reduce to that place?
But I think we should let staff do that.
I think that when we add, give it to staff, we're abdicating our responsibility. Staff looks at us to make tough decisions and not raid their accounts all the time.
We're not raiding their accounts, Roger, we're simply asking their expertise in making the correct determination.
Yeah, but when you do that, some staff are more vocal than others, and so those departments get hit harder than others.
Yeah, you put it on them and it should be on us.
Okay, Josh?
I, I think something that's noteworthy though, IT came before us and presented and said, you know, we usually have 12,000 for this training, we understand that it's a difficult budget year, when you're looking at cutting, if you need a tax solution, I'd be more than happy to give this up in order to accommodate that. I, I never would have known that if it weren't for allowing staff to make those decisions.
And this budget doesn't include, it already includes that?
No, my point is that moving forward, if we do need to make more cuts, let, let them come to us and say, you know, some staff can say, yeah, I have, I have this much I could cut if need be, I have this much that I could cut if need be. I, I personally don't support that, but I think that that's the best way to do it.
Nobody supports cutting.
I mean, I, I guess here's my basic concern, I mean, would I love to be able to find the 1%, yeah, totally. Am I very aware of the fact that each of the last two years we've asked staff to reduce, and this year, we ask staff to reduce, and they've done it? And so I'm reduce, and, and those reductions have all come out of O and M, because nobody was willing to even discuss using retirements and vacant positions. So I'm curious, how many vacant positions do we currently have? Last year, we had almost a million dollars of vacant positions when we went into the final budget, and we weren't willing to look at alleviating our problem by, by not filling any of those vacant positions, which wouldn't have, I mean, does it have an impact? Of course it does. But did it, did anybody, would it have created a job loss for anybody? No. You know, did, would it have created a, a time reduction or an FTE reduction for anybody? No. So I would like to know, how many unfilled positions do we have now? What are they, and what is the total, and I assume the money that we didn't spend, don't spend each year on unfilled positions just goes into the general fund, is that correct?
Depending on what fund that individual position is from. If it's from science and environment, it goes in science and environment. If it's from airport, it goes into airport.
In, in their savings account, in the 78?
No.
No.
Into, no, into the reserve spreadsheet that you got.
Right.
It shows each fund.
Right.
And so airport has its own fund to do its savings in, science and environment has its own fund to do its savings in.
All right, I'm trying to remember the savings.
The departments that belong in the general fund, we don't, we are not allowed to save, just the general fund is allowed to save. So if I am trying to save for a vehicle, then I have to put my savings into Fund 78.
So just FYI for later, I think we need to, when we have a chief financial officer, I think we trained up and, and play, I think we need to look at that whole situation.
But we don't have time to do it.
No, no, but I'm just saying, just, you know, people that set the agenda, can you make a note?
Okay.
So, so how many unfilled positions do we have? What is the total, you know, value, so to speak, if those, if those positions are not filled, I mean, by position, what, what are those numbers?
I'm, I'm reading some lips as good as I can read lips, and she's saying I don't have.
Okay, but, so I'm going to need that before, before I can competently address, you know, is there a way without cutting O and M, is there a way that we might be able to approach that 1%? I mean, clearly it's possible because we had it, you know, we had it, and I'm not, and that's not a criticism, I'm saying it's, it's apparently possible to get that because we had it last year. I understand that it wasn't something you were prepared to speak to today, and I understand that, and that's not a problem. But I'm not going to be able to make a final decision until about this solution worksheet, until I get that info.
Okay, Josh?
The, the one thing I guess I would ask if you're going to, if we ask for vacant positions, then I also want to ask John to bring a report of how many people work seven days a week or are working more than their 40 hours. I'd ask Skylar, how many people work every single Saturday? I mean.
The zoo?
The zoo, yeah, let, you know, let's, you know, those people who are doing the extra work right now because they love our city, pulling a vacant position tells them that there's no light at the end of the tunnel, that that's your life and it's why people leave. And I just, I think that given we have a balanced budget, we've, we have sacrifices from staff, and I think that we should roll with this, this balanced budget.
And we get to take the 3%.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm not comfortable, last year, not every position that was vacant would have created overtime for somebody else. But we went ahead and filled them knowing, in my opinion, having been given a clear heads up that this year's budget was going to be tough, we went ahead and filled at least one position that I can think of that I believe we could have done without. And, but we, we didn't choose to do that, and so now we're where we are. So I would like to know, because I'm not proposing that if we, you know, are down one gang mower operator, that that's a great thing to cut. I get that, but I'm just curious, what, what's out there? I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What action is needed from the council today in order to meet our publication requirements?
So we just need direction, counsel, if you're comfortable with this number to go to publication, then that's the action we need. If you want to cut more of this out so that we can work the numbers, so that it can go to publication, then that's what we need to do. So the, I mean, that's really what we're looking for is direction from the council on move forward with this and, and, and publish for publication, or cut it, and then you decide if you want to make those cuts, or if you want the, the department heads to make those cuts, and.
Is there anything to preclude us saying, gosh, you know, we need to give HR time to come up with what Josh asked for and what I asked for, and I'm personally available on Monday?
We do still have the, next Thursday's worked budget meeting scheduled in place of the.
The work session.
Session, clarification.
Liaison.
Giant.
So we got a week.
So we've got, we've got the week to, to do that if you give the direction to do that.
And I think, I'm okay if staff looks at not filling positions as a way of reducing this down to, I don't think a balanced budget is reached until you're just taking your 3%. If you're taking anything more than what is traditionally appropriated by the legislature, you're not doing a balanced budget, you're going into forgone, that's why it's a, it's called forgone. It's because you are saying, we can't balance our budget without it. I think we can. I think we can balance with 3%. I think there's attrition, there's delays in hiring, several departments cannot fill their positions right away, it's a long process to fill them. And I, I think there's a way that departments can come up with some of that money that gets us balanced without taking forgone.
But it's my understanding that even if those positions are projected, we have to budget for them, whether they're filled or not, we will end up probably with some reserves at the end of this year because of unfilled positions in whatever department, but we still have to budget for them.
They could project the reserves and we could backfill with the reserve money then.
I mean, that, I mean, that, that would be another possibility, because we've seen, for example, you know, at the end of, of a fiscal year and even after the books have closed, you know, departmental remodeling projects and, you know, there's kind of that traditional, use it or lose it, you know, I got it, I'm going to do something with it kind of mentality. And so, you know, I think it might be interesting, on top of everything else that we're asking, to see which departments traditionally over, I mean, I don't know how easy it is to get this info, I think it should be relatively simple on a, you know, from a spreadsheet, which departments traditionally over the last five years have had what kind of, of reserves or, or excess at the end of the year? You know, what does that look like? And if we take an average over five years, we might be in the ballpark. Another way to approach it, you mentioned last time we met, Ann, and you talked about, you know, okay, we're 66% of the way through the budget, and, you know, and it's so basically if spending continues with whatever spikes are going to happen, you know, based on bits coming in or whatever, you know, I mean, here's a ballpark. I mean, is it a guesstimate? Yes.
Yes, you had asked if we could do that for this current budget year, and I have sent the email out to all the departments, letting them know that you'd like them to guesstimate their year end. We were waiting for the most recent month closure, which happened yesterday at 4:30.
Okay.
So now we can proceed with doing estimates. Am I going to get it in time for you for next week? I, I don't know, probably not, but we can get it to you fairly quickly.
Maybe now that there's, you know, some excruciating urgency, you know, may, maybe department heads would be able to, you know, do some kind of a, at least a ballpark, because that, that might give us a good handle on, is it a reasonable calculated risk to say that we're going to have X amount of money at the end of the year so we can forego the forgone? Because we do have reserves, then if we fall, you know, 250,000 short, you know, at, at the end of the year, we, we still have the 2.1 million that we could backfill with. And that would not require departments to try to further cut O and M. My sense is that what people came to us with in terms of their, their basic departmental budget was, was pretty straightforward and transparent, and, you know, nobody was trying to pad anything. And so I'm hesitant to go to, to O and M, but it, but I, you know, I think Rick's notion of unfilled positions that we can maybe put off, maybe we don't hire for half a year. Well, what does that create? That creates a calculable savings, you know, but I, without knowing what those positions are, I have, and, you know, roughly benefits, I mean, I have no way of even thinking about that in a rational way.
So I could comment and say, if you want to make your motion, and I'm going to get daggers, but just remember, I'm the idiot who volunteered to do this. So you get what you get.
Your halo, your halo will, will repel the daggers.
I doubt it. You could make your motion, again, to tentatively redo this budget minus the 325, again, banking with the possibility, hoping that not filling positions right away and possibly delaying the hiring of positions a month or two could offset with the understanding that if they don't, that you are agreeing that we could come back next year, should we need it, and ask for additional reserves from the general fund, because this, we're talking about just the general fund departments. Because the 325 is completely built into the general fund, no other tax-supported fund.
So I make a motion.
So, hold on, I got, Josh has something over here, then it looks like Josh, and I think Rick and, and Roger.
Mine was more of a, a point of order. I don't think we're talking 325, I think we're talking 417, because we added the 91,000.
Well, but the 325 is the one.
But the 325 needs to go away, but we got to replace 91,000.
Whatever amount you want to throw into your motion.
But you know, I mean, we've already approved it.
With, yes, because not all of that 91 is coming out of the general fund, though.
Yeah, but I'm saying that.
So you can't use the whole 91 in the motion.
Yeah, Josh and then Rick.
I think we, we just spent 2 million out of general reserves, and I, I think to say, let's hope that we can get, you know, let's hope that it doesn't happen, that we have to just pull in and pull the rest of those reserves out when we just spent a significant amount, is, is the way that I would prefer to build the budget. And so for me personally, I would move that we approve the numbers in this budget contingent upon adding in the 5% modifier in the way, I know it has to be include a general fund, et cetera, and so approve this budget for publication contingent upon the adding of the 91,000, subject to review next Thursday with the opportunity to look at vacant positions to adjust.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and I know that, I think Chris had something to say, she wanted to say something, Claudia?
Well, that, but the vacant positions may not be the only, the only thing to discuss next week, and your motion is making it so that's the only discussion we can have with regard to this budget.
And I, I would like, I would like to at least have us recognize staff by, by making it clear that any input that they have, be that around unfilled positions, whatever, what their traditional excess reserves are, or budget excess, you know, has been at the end of, of past few years. I mean, I, I really want to make sure that while we don't put the decision on staff, at the same time, I want, I, I want to make sure that the door is way open for them to come in, and I'm not asking for O and M cuts. Now, if somebody comes in and says, hey, we can cut O and M, no problem. Somebody comes in and says, hey, we can cut O and M, no problem. I mean, that's, you know, that's up to them. But, but I, I would, they know their departments better than anybody else, and I would like to know what, if any, suggestions they have to offer based on the dilemma with which we're trying to deal.
Okay, we have, Rick, you have something?
Can I just ask for a clarification of the motion? Is the motion to approve it with the 3% plus the 1% forgone?
Yes.
Okay, I can't support that.
I can't.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Mansfield in a second by Larry. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Thorick?
Yes.
Bray?
No.
Cede?
No.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we propose a budget that includes the 3% tax increase without the 1% forgone as currently proposed.
Second.
We have a motion by Cede in a second by Stevens, then discussion.
It seems like we're going different ways, we're zeroing in.
Here and no discussion then. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cede?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Thorick?
No.
Mansfield?
No.
Ortega?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, we'll prepare the budget, removing that three, let me look at the number.
325, 642.
Thank you, 325, 624, 642, not 624, 642. And we'll have it prepared for you, prepared for publication.
So who's preparing the reduction? It was balanced with the 4%.
Oh.
We'll, we'll do it.
We'll do it.
We'll do it, and it'll be in front of you, so-
Letting you know what we did to do it.
And if it's not inappropriate, which I'm sure it probably is because I have no authority to do this, but you can slap my wrist and that'll be fine, I, I really, really want to say to staff, you know, if you've got any brilliant ideas, you know, or even if they're not brilliant, if you have any marginally viable ideas, please, I'm sure that Ann and the mayor will ask, I trust that they will do that, they, they do, Ann is really good about that. But please, don't be shy because, and don't view this as a bunch of citizen governors trying to tell you how to do your job. I certainly understand how it could feel that way, I get it. That is not the intention, at least on my part, and I can obviously speak only for myself.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned.